We don't have a word.
Well, I have one. I have this on already because it's your prior, so what I'm gonna do is. Mr. Dodd, any public comment?
We have two attorneys, uh, the first.
Okay.
Parcel, and then Lynn Mesteth representing the second and third.
Awesome, okay. Uh, let's see, I see, I see Commissioner Pollak. I don't see Commissioner Shurley.
Hi, sir.
Son brother, okay. At least someone does, so why don't you, okay, I believe you're Commissioner Pollak. So I believe she's here, I don't see her, but I believe him. So I'd say, let's go. There, Mr. Bird, okay. Commissioners. She is, alright, let me kick this thing out. Are you Ms. Ward?
I am.
With that, it was called on November sixteenth, two thousand twenty, Cast County Mission Meeting to Order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brightling?
Here.
Peterson?
I'm here.
Dean?
Here.
Pollak?
Here.
Shurling?
Here.
We have a forum, thank you everyone, if you would. Check, check. Okay, there you go, uh, with that, uh, Ms. Ward, if you'd lead us in the Fledge of Allegiance, please, those of you in watching at home, there are flags.
Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Ward.
You're welcome.
Alright, Commissioners, I'm sure you've had a chance to review the prior meeting minutes, it's sort of for a motion to approve or amend, please. Move to approve. There's a second, please.
Second.
Moved in second, and the meeting has been approved, it's presented. Any discussion, if not, all those in favor of the motion, please, if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes, order of the agenda, we have a couple revisions. Those of you at home, Commissioners, I think you got them via email earlier today, it was a little bit late, but you, they arrived, so it's item five B, which is change in sales price for two tax-ophited lots, and C, E and C, five. Addendum to commercial lease of space for election equipment. Otherwise, that should be it, just the two, so that for a motion to approve the order of agenda with the amendments, please.
Sir. Sir, Commissioner moved to approve the order of the agenda with the additions of five B and five C.
Thank you, is there a second, please?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please, if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed, same side, motion passes, okay, with that, we now have a chance for public comment, I see a lot of people on, but I don't think.
Consent agenda.
There we go, consent agenda, yeah, there you go, uh, with that, consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Pollak, I move approval.
Outstanding, is there a second, please?
Second.
Moved in second, the consent agenda be approved, as presented, any discussion? Is there any discussion on the motion? Any discussion, if not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Shurling?
Yeah.
Brightling?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Pollak?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you for the reminder, uh, public comment, now's the time, if you're not on the agenda, to address the Commission for a couple minutes, if you so choose. I don't see anybody here rushing to the mic, or virtually. So with that, we'll go to the regular agenda, item one on the regular agenda, Axon Contract for Body Cameras, Tasers and In-Car Video, Sheriff, I see you're on. You wanna present this for us, sir? Mickey, Michelle?
Yes, uh, good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the Commission, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so this is, of course, the, uh, the contract that we had gone over in our, our budget, um, for two thousand and twenty-one, and the additional five years, which it will take to, to, uh, complete this contract, and so, um, since our last meeting, when we, when we talked about the, the camera system, um, there has been no, uh, other than the individual who came to the meeting to discuss the camera system with us, and where he thought, uh, some of the downfalls may be, we've looked over those, and we still feel that the Axon, uh, body camera system, to include the, uh, the, the Taser contract and the in-car video agreement, is, uh, still the route that we would like to go. And, um, and so I believe that all of you have the contract in front of you, uh, is that correct, or do I need to email to you?
We have it.
Okay, so I would be looking for an approval to, um, of course, sign this contract, uh, which would, um, the first year would cost us two hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars, and then it shows each additional year there, uh, at which point, after the five years, it would be the one, one million, two hundred and ninety thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four. So, of course, this is already built into our budget, and each year from after two thousand and twenty-one, we will build in the appropriate amount into our budget, uh, in order to pay the system off. And so with that, I would take any additional questions, we do have some representatives here from Axon Body Camera, uh, to answer some maybe more specific technical questions, if someone had something in, 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 uh, in line with that. But otherwise, I will turn it over to you for, uh, questions for me.
Thank you, Sheriff, Commissioners, questions for our Sheriff, Mr. Brightling?
You indicated that this was turned over to Mr. Birdick for review, has he responded to your request?
Commissioner Brightling, um, Michelle, is that the case or not?
Sheriff Johnner, I did email the contract proposal to Attorney Birdick.
Alright, and he has not had a chance to review it, is that correct? I would assume that was done by this point.
Um, I have not heard from him on it, I know that, uh, Attorney Birdick is on the air.
You can see your purple circle lighting up here, you have any comments?
You muted.
Okay, he's unmuted. Mr. Birdick, can you hear us, sir? I think we can hear you.
Welcome to the audio conference. Please.
I think we've got your mic.
Uh, Mr. Birdick, I think we can hear you already, sir.
If you're the meeting organizer, press star now.
I'm not the meeting organizer. Pro tip for you, Bird.
You are now joining the meeting.
Mr. Birdick?
This is, this is Bird, are you looking for some input for me?
Uh, yes, sir, regarding the, uh, contract for the body cameras, tasers and in-car video, we're looking for some commentary from our state attorney regarding the contract.
Thank you, I was having some sound problems.
Still am, but hopefully, hopefully you can hear me.
I, I have reviewed the contract, um, and. I, I have. I have reviewed the contract. I don't have any particular problems with it, obviously, it's a, a set of payments over a course of years, which is not the normal way we do, um, most of our contracts, um, but I don't have any particular objection to the contract as laid out.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Birdick. Uh, Commissioners, any further questions? If not, looking for further discussion, a motion? Commissioner Shurling?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, um, I would move to authorize Cast County Sheriff's Office to purchase Axon Body Cameras, Tasers and In-Car Video Equipment.
Is there a second?
Second, Commissioner Pollak.
Moved and seconded, any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? Any discussion, if not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Pollak?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Shurling?
Yes.
Brightling?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes. Motion passes, thank you, Commissioners, Sheriff, anything further to add?
I just wanted to, uh, mention, Mr. Chair and members of the Commission, I just want, I appreciate, um, your support in, in moving forward with this project, I think it will be good for our office. And, uh, in the, in the long run, I think it will save us some money, and it'll also help with, uh, with us being able to prove cases, and, and, uh, the professionalism of our agency and transparency of our agency, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you, Sheriff, we agree. I'm two hundred and in the Castle Property Tax Center for Pasta Company, uh, do we have someone online?
Who was the Beach is online?
And what's the Beach?
Economic developer from Castleton.
Okay, uh, Ms. Beach, I don't see your name, but it doesn't mean you're not here, are you on?
I am, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
Wonderful, uh, could you fill us in on what you're up, there you are, could you fill us in on what you're up to?
Sure, um, Abiamo Pasta is working on a, a significant expansion in Castleton, um, they are looking to double the size of their facility, um, they've been in Castleton, um, just over ten years, um, and looking at a ninety-four thousand square foot expansion, um, which will double the number of jobs and the size of the facility in the community. Um, the company is requesting, uh, payment in lieu of taxes, um, and they have requested a tenure, um, and the City of Castleton has approved that at their last meeting. They're asking that of the County Commission and of the School District.
Wonderful, has the School District met yet?
They have, and it's gone to their Finance Committee, so it'll be on their next agenda.
Perfect, thank you, uh, anything further, Ms. Beach?
I don't have any other, um, questions or concerns, I know that, um, one of the representatives of the company was not able to get on, so I apologize for that this afternoon.
Uh, Commissioners, any questions, Commissioner Dean?
Sheriff, thank you, just a question, how is the actual payment in lieu of taxes determined? I think it's a hundred dollars a year, how was that determined?
Sure, their actual request was a dollar per year, and at the request of our city auditor, um, she increased it, um, to a hundred dollars per year, um, it was just a request on her, on her behalf for her bookkeeping purposes.
Is that an amount that can be negotiated to any, any, you know, dollar limit, or is there a, some specific limit on what that is?
There's not, not that I'm aware of.
Where's the Commissioner Shurling?
Commissioner Pollak here.
Uh, Commissioner Shurling and Commissioner Pollak, or Commissioner Shurling is your.
I'm sorry, my hand was inadvertently raised.
Wonderful, my apologies, Commissioner Pollak, you have the, you have the con.
Yes, uh, this is a question for Ms. Beach, is the pasta plant paying property taxes now on the structure that they have?
Commissioner Pollak and members of the committee, they do have, um, an existing, um, pilot and property tax exemption that they also are, are working on, so it'll be staged, I think that first one comes off in two years.
Is, is that one a five-year or a ten-year, the original?
The original was a ten-year, I believe, and then there was another pilot for five.
Okay, so, so the promise of, of, by giving the, uh, the tax incentive that, that we're going to, we're going to be getting property taxes, I mean, that, that, that's, the dream, the promise still hasn't come true on that, has it?
It's coming, and, and, um, Commissioner Pollak, we're actually seeing it in the, in the, um, community benefit from the job creation primarily at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Could I add to that as well? This is Del Lozing, City Attorney for Castleton.
Yes, sir.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to note that the, the taxes paid on that parcel in twenty nineteen were, uh, eight thousand, five hundred and eight dollars, and like I said, I think, like Melissa said, there's, um, additional incentives to yet, to, to come off, so that will go up in the future.
Commissioner Pollak, anything further?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Dean?
So, just a clarification, so, on that portion of the property, taxes will be continued to be paid at that amount, and then the pilot only relates to the addition? That's a question.
That's correct.
Correct.
Just out of curiosity, as Commissioner Pollak speaks my interest, what will the taxes be in two years on this existing piece of property? If you know that off, off the top of your head, it feels like I could look it up real quick, too, I wouldn't show.
I don't know that off the top of my head, I apologize for that.
No, it's just, it's more of a curiosity, anything else? Uh, Commissioners, any further questions? Discussion, a motion? Commissioner Dean?
And just a comment, um, you know, normally we scrutinize these pretty, pretty rigorously, um, it's, it's, from my perspective, nice to see some development in, out of town, um, like this, in, in Castleton, something other than Fargo or West Fargo. And normally it'd be a little bit, uh, probably a, a little bit more difficult in getting me to vote for something like this, but I think the development in Castleton, the job development, and the fact that we've got a pretty good business going, I, I'm going to support this, uh, to that extent, in fact, I'd like to make a motion.
Uh, proceed, sir.
Move to participate in the request for a payment in lieu of taxes incentive for proposed expansion of an existing manufacturing facility in the City of Castleton, submitted by Abiamo Pasta Company for a tenure period.
Is there a second, please?
Second by Commissioner Pollak.
Okay, moved in second, and any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? If not, I'm gonna make some comments, I, I think Commissioner Dean, I couldn't agree with you more in what you said, I think the struggle I'd have with this is, it does seem like a big deal, uh, for Castleton, but something like this in Fargo hardly hits the radar. Uh, I think encouraging a business like we did with El Deveron, I think there's some logic behind that, I mean, the scale, substantively different, we're talking, you know, forty million versus less. Uh, you know, if you look at their, way the performer, the performer, the way their spec sheets read, they're buying as much equipment as they are building, the total staff level isn't increasing substantively, but, uh, seeing Castleton grow, especially to this scale, this is a monster project for Castleton, uh, and the dream would be for it to continue to grow, and every eight years, they doubled again, and the whole county wins, Castleton wins, and the employer wins, and we get local pasta, so I think, uh, there's a lot to like about it, uh, that's all I have to say, Commissioners, any further discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Pollak?
Yes.
Shurling?
Yeah.
Brightling?
Yes.
Motion passes, uh, Ms. Beach, thank you to you and your team, and, uh, anything further to add?
Thank you so much, um, Commission, for your support, we certainly appreciate it, and look forward to continued growth in the community.
We look forward to eating yummy pasta.
Thank you.
Thanks, with that, I'm three on our agenda, County Lieutenant Mercy, snow closure gates, uh, Mr. Benson, he was remote before, I'm guessing you're remote now, there you are, you are remote.
Alright, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, Commissioners, uh, about a month ago, I met with the Sheriff's Department Staff, uh, between, uh, County Highway Department Staff and Sheriff's Department Staff, as we've kicked off, uh, doing quarterly safety, highway safety, um, group meetings between our two departments, that were passing on information about what we see out there, um, whether it's regarding, uh, accidents, crashes, or, or other safety issues, and one of the items that, that, uh, was discussed was some of the ongoing winter snow travel issues that we've had on one particular stretch of road, and that's between West Fargo and, uh, Mapleton. Now, a lot of times when I ninety-four closes, the DOT gets out and closes their gates, and all of a sudden, the stretch between Mapleton and West Fargo on, on Highway ten becomes the go-to bypass for people, and, uh, especially with the challenges of the lagoon system immediately west of West Fargo, that drifts in terribly, and in years past, we've, it, it seems like every other year, we have a large, uh, blizzard event that includes having to dig out a lot of cars in that area, and, uh, so, in working with the sheriff, um, we had, uh, gone out and investigated some different options, and, uh, uh, one of the kind of, uh, primary options that, in our research, that, that's used in other areas of the DOT in North Dakota, as well as other upper Midwest states, is, is taking a, a light pole and, uh, either, uh, put, uh, putting up a light pole and then adding the arm, or if there's an existing light pole, adding an arm to it, that then can be dropped, it has LED lights, it has a stand, and in the west side of West Fargo, they do have an existing light pole, uh, for us to be able to attach that to, and, um, um, but, uh, for, in, in Mapleton, we would have to add a, a light pole like this, it's got this, uh, breakaway type system, the light also helps to illuminate the area during a blizzard, so that people know, you know, if it's two in the morning, they don't just drive into, um, you know, if they don't see the flashing blinking lights that, red lights that are on that. Uh, but we think this, uh, will help, uh, with some of the issues, I'd like to, uh, give an opportunity for our sheriff to, uh, provide his comments on, on this as well.
Sheriff Johnner?
Sure, I can do that, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, and, uh, Jason as well, thanks for providing the information, um, County Highway ten has been, in the past, for us, over the past, uh, few winters, a little bit of a challenge, of course, typically what happens, much like Jason was alluding to, the interstate will be, uh, shut down, and no one can get onto the interstate, and they still wanna travel west, and so they, of course, look for ways around, um, the, the gates to travel, or to continue on the interstate, and so then the highway, or Cast Highway ten becomes a, a route that people typically look to, uh, to take, and much like he said, it's open in that area, so it drifts a lot, visibility is bad, the road drifts in, and, uh, and we're, we've responded to a number of, uh, of, uh, different vehicles that have been stranded out in that area, and, and different types of crashes and stuff, so I think that this would, uh, would assist us, I know that we can't put gates up on all of our county highways, and you know, might people try to look for a different route if they can't go down Highway ten, I think they may, possibly, um, but, uh, I think that this is one of the more traveled roads during that time, and I think Jason would agree with me, and so I think that, uh, this, this would help, but typically what we do now is we, we do try to close that road down, uh, we've called Jason's staff a number of times, and they've been very helpful in coming out and, and putting up temporary, temporary signs, um, but when we do that, and we, that takes away from some of our staffing, because we have to have a deputy, um, stay by those, those, uh, signs that can be removed, because, believe it or not, sometimes people will remove them and drive around them, so, uh, we, we typically have to, to stage a deputy at that location anyways, then, if we put a sign out there. So, um, this has been something that's been discussed for, uh, for a few years, to try to make it a little safer on that road.
Uh, thanks, Sheriff, and, and with that, you know, I think another safety part to it, too, is, uh, during a blizzard, having staff trying to, to handle a large barricade and throw sandbags on it to hold it down, and when you have, you know, thirty, forty mile an hour gusts, i- isn't, isn't ideal either, versus being able to operate, uh, a, a gate that's really designed to, to handle that type of, uh, storm, and then, and the sheriff, as the instant commander for snow emergencies, his staff would be the ones that would have the keys to unlock the, the locks on it, and lower it, and raise it.
Thank you, Mr. Benson, just out of curiosity, so where, or if you're Sheriff Johnner, so if they proceed to the west, where, if the interstate closes, where do they intend to go, are they then zigzag through Castleton and north, or what? Just, because it makes no sense to me to get a couple miles out of town and be stalled, so where do they go?
Um, do you want me to answer that, Jason?
Um, sure, yeah, and I can comment if there's any other.
Yes, um, so, Commissioner, or, uh, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, typically what they'll do is take that County Highway ten, and then they can get on at the Raymond Exchange, because I don't believe that there's a gate there, um, and then, uh, also, uh, they, they will try to make it to Mapleton, and, and, uh, because there's not gates on all the entrances on to the interstate. So they just, they continue west and try to find different, uh, areas where they can get on that's not gated.
Thank you, Sheriff, uh, Commissioners, questions, Commissioner Pollak?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, so, before the highway, I have a couple of questions, before the highway is closed, do you sweep the highway then, does the Sheriff's Department or the Highway Department drive the road to make sure you're not closing the gates with people on it? Sheriff?
Yep, Commissioner Pollak, sorry about that, it took me a few minutes, I get clicked back on here, um, so typically, we, uh, we, we, we will do some, some of that, um, in accordance with the Highway Patrol as well. Uh, usually, there's an order given, uh, that the interstate's going to be closed down, which is broadcasted over, uh, over the radio, of course, and over media outlets for a little bit of a period of time, before that happens, we, they don't all of a sudden just close it down, there's usually a time, um, period given, and then, uh, yeah, I mean, we, with the amount of roadway that there is to sweep, I wouldn't say that a hundred percent of it gets swept, but a, a good majority of it through, uh, through this area and through Cast County does typically, um, but most of the gates, um, you know, people can still get into, to town and get off somewhere there where they aren't stuck out on the, on the highway.
Okay, and, uh, the, the other comment is, I, I think that, well, when you close a main highway, like, like I ninety-four, of course, it pushes the traffic that wants to get home onto the secondary roads, and, and over the past years, the, the public has been able to access that secondary road in order to get home to Mapleton, or Castleton, or Armenia, or where, wherever it is they're, they're heading to. Um, so, so now, if we're going to close that road, you know, we, we have an, an obligation to notify the public that that route is no longer available, and we can't just do it just on the day of the, on the day of the closing, there has to be some communication of that, which, I'm not sure the best way to do that, but leave that up to you, Sheriff, and you, Jason, in order to let the public know that Cast, Cast ten is not going to be an escape route once the interstate is closed.
Uh, Commissioner Pollak, I, I very much agree with you that we'll need to do some education, because this will be a new thing, uh, that wasn't, uh, there in the past, and so people will have to make some different, uh, arrangements, so if we decide to go forward with this project, um, I will rely on our adopted community contacts, um, to make sure that we get the word out to those that live in Mapleton and Castleton, um, that, uh, in the future, we will be looking to close that, those roads down during adverse, adverse weather conditions, and that they will need to pre-plan for that, uh, to make sure that they can, they can make it on.
Great, you ready for a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Sir.
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the chairperson to sign the purchase order in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and forty dollars with Stratocorporation for emergency road closure gates and installation.
Is there a second, please? Second, moved in second, and any discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion, if not, roll call.
Commissioner Brightling?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Pollak?
Yes.
Shurling?
Yeah.
Motion passes, thank you, everybody, thank Sheriff, thank Mr. Benson, with that, let's move on to item four A, Mr. Dodd, which is a diversion question right away, you mentioned there are a couple owners or owners' representatives present, any idea which?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commission, I believe we have a representative for, uh, the item four A, I believe Randall Baki is with us virtually, and then I believe, uh, Lynn Mesteth, uh, may be to us for items four B and four C.
Okay, perfect, uh, Mr. Dodd, you know the drill, and as though we haven't been in one of these meetings before, in case we have some visitors that wanna learn what we're up to, and, uh, is Mr. Frederick on? that want to learn what we're up to, and is Mr. Fredericks on? Mr. Fredericks is on, okay. Now, Mr. Dodd, seat please.
Okay, Commissioners, thank you again for having us. As usual, we are here tonight representing the Cass County Joint Board, asking for any commission, consideration, approval of the use of QuickTake eminent domain. We have five actions for consideration of the board today. The parcels that are in question, we have two actions that are related to parcels impacted by the diversion channel. We have two parcels that are in, two actions, I should say, that are related to parcels impacted by the I-29 grade raise project. And we have one action related to parcel impacted by Southern Embankment Reach Number One. As I've explained the past few times that we've been here, the Cass County Joint Board is a member of the diversion authority. And in that role, they are responsible for acquiring the property rights necessary for the project in North Dakota. To accomplish that, Cass County Joint Board has retained services of appraisers, land firms or land agents that are responsible to negotiate with property owners. Onsted Twitchell is providing legal counsel for most of the acquisitions for the project. And my team is helping sort of manage the overall process. As I mentioned, the joint board has retained appraisers. We start all the acquisitions with an appraisal and we use that appraised value to make an offer of just compensation. And then, once that offer is made, following the statutes lined out in the Century Code, we are negotiating with property owners. And in many cases, we have been able to reach a voluntary agreement with the property owners, but in some cases, we are not able to reach that agreement after prolonged negotiations. And ultimately, those bring us here in front of the county commission. Mr. Fredericks will speak to the details of that statutory process in a minute. Earlier, the properties that are in your consideration here today, two of them are impacted by the diversion channel. As you're probably aware, the diversion authority just issued on Friday last week, the sixth draft of the request for proposals to the P3 development firms. The process of moving forward with hiring one of those developers is moving forward rapidly. The goal or expectation of that process is to get quotes back and select a developer and turn over the project lands to them next spring, summer timeframe. And that's what's driving the need for those parcels. For the I-29 and Southern Embankment parcels, the Corps of Engineer is designing those projects and they're anxious to be advertising for bids here later in December, opening bids early next year, and having construction starts next summer. And so that's what drives the timeline. And while we're here today, I'll go into the specifics of each parcel as we get into those, but maybe at this point, I would turn to Mr. Fredericks and see if he's able to provide some of this actual process that we are obligated.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission.
Commissioner Pollak, you have a question? Okay, there we go. Mr. Fredericks, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, you've heard all, most of this before, but for the benefit of landowners who are in attendance and maybe other interested parties, I'll just provide a brief synopsis of how we got to this point in terms of our statutory obligations and why the commission is involved. As the commission is aware, in 2017, the North Dakota Legislature modified the North Dakota Water Resource District statutes regarding QuickTake authority. And the idea at the time was to ensure that landowners are afforded sufficient opportunity to engage in meaningful negotiations with water resource districts. Evidently, some water entities, not necessarily water resource districts, but some water entities had been rushing to QuickTake, if you will. And so the legislature entertained a few different options and ultimately, we negotiated a situation in the statutes whereby water resource districts would have to follow a lengthier, more detailed, informal and formal negotiation process to ensure that, again, that landowners have sufficient opportunity to really engage with water resource districts and to ensure that water resource districts do not rush to QuickTake. And I think as you'll see with, in terms of the packets submitted by AE2S and the land agents and all the matters before you today, you'll see that the landowners have in fact had many, many opportunities to engage the water resource district or their agents in negotiations regarding right-of-way acquisitions. One thing I just want to note, the two items that landowners frequently wish to raise with the county commission, item one would be the values. Landowners frequently want to approach the county commission and talk about the appraisals or the values approved by the Cass County Joint Water Resource District. The legislature did not insert the county into this process to act as the judge in terms of values or to ultimately approve our value offers to the landowners or the appraisal, for that matter. The idea was to ensure that the county commission, the entity that appoints the Cass County Joint Water Resource District members, that you are comfortable knowing that the water resource district has followed the requisite negotiation steps. That is a very limited scope in terms of your involvement and you are not required to approve the appraisals that we provide or that we procure or to even approve or agree with the amounts of the offers that we have submitted to landowners. That is not the role of the county commission. And so that's not your burden to carry. Rather, your limited scope is to ensure that we follow the requisite statutory negotiation steps. The other issue a lot of landowners wish to raise would be legal issues that are not necessarily related to values, but may arise in the course of eminent domain litigation. Again, the county commission is not, was not inserted into this role to act as an arbiter of legal disputes that may be related to the acquisition. Rather, again, the county commission's role is solely to ensure that we can verify that we follow the negotiation steps. So I just want to provide that as a precursor for landowners so they understand that the commission, while you may, landowners may raise any issues you'd like to raise in the court, in the course of litigation, the commission is not here to ultimately be the arbiter regarding values or any other legal issues. So again, very limited scope. And I wanted to make sure, I know the commission understands that, we've been through this process a number of times, but I just wanted to make sure the landowners and their representatives are aware of that. I know that Mr. Baki is on as well and he represents, I believe, BREI Estates. I did have the opportunity to review Mr. Baki's letter recently to the county and he did indicate that they are requesting additional information. What I can tell, Mr. Baki, right up front here is just that the Cass County Joint Board has now seen the letter and we are directing agents to provide the additional information. But that, that additional information and that ongoing negotiation can continue despite approval by the county today. So I just wanted to provide that upfront. Any questions from the commission?
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Dodd or Mr. Fredericks before we get to item 4A? All right, seeing none. Mr. Dodd, item 4A, please.
Chairman, Commissioners, I believe you have a packet for each one of these parcels. The item 4A in your agenda is a property OIN 843. This is a property owned by BREI Estates Triple LP. Ole Olafson with HDR has been our land agent, working with Randall Baki on this acquisition. Ole is here with us in the room and Mr. Baki is on virtually. In your packet, as usual, you'll see a table of contents, a timeline of the steps and actions that have been taken, the recommended motion, a checklist of the recommended motion. And then on page four is a brief negotiating summary. Page five shows a map of the parcel and the impacts from the I-29 road raise project. Maybe for a minute, if you're not real familiar, the I-29 road raise project will involve temporarily reconstructing the existing roadway to the east of its existing alignment. Having that temporary roadway built on the east portion, we can see it crosshatched on the map, the temporary roadway will be in place for a couple of years while the existing roadbed is raised high enough so it's out of the flood threat when the project is constructed and in operation. After the roadway raised, then traffic will be reverted back to the original raised roadway and the temporary roadway will be removed. And so what we have been seeking is a temporary construction easement along these parcels on the east side of I-29. We have reached agreement with a few property owners, but there's a few in front of you tonight where we have not yet reached agreement. The acquisition summary here, we have had long negotiating process with Mr. Baki. I think ultimately, there are two issues of why we haven't reached a settlement. One is a value issue. And secondly, related to that is concern about damage after the roadway project is done. Mr. Baki recently submitted a letter explaining some of the concerns due to damage from the temporary construction easement. And those are matters that we have asked, as Mr. Fredericks noted, we have asked technical experts, engineering team working on that design to help respond to that letter and look forward to getting these responses back so we can continue the negotiations. Today, I guess, just as usual, to summarize the acquisition summary that you see on page four, I would also point to page 29 of the packet, that is, the contact log or contract register with the property owners. You can see that we've been in discussions on this parcel since May of 2019 and there's been some good back and forth all along. I believe the property owner has requested that we purchase the parcel in fee title. That is something that we are willing to do and something we have done in other locations. Of course, there's a value discrepancy and that's why we haven't been able to set a finish line yet. With that, I guess I would pause to see if there's any comments or questions.
Any questions for Mr. Dodd? Not seeing any. Anything further to ask, Mr. Dodd?
Not for me.
Okay. Mr. Baki, I see you're on the line, wanting to address the commission, if now, if so, now would be your time.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. I'm Randall Baki and I serve as the general partner of BREI Estates, LLLLP. And this property is located essentially at the interchange of the existing interstate just a little bit south. The first issue or concern I have is that this does not appear to be the proper procedure for what the Cass County Joint Water Resource District is requesting to do. And as I understand it, and it was just confirmed by the comments that were made, they're requesting a temporary construction easement was the word that was used, not a temporary drainage easement. This is a construction easement request. And I think this situation with the BREI Estates property is pretty distinct from the other matters that I think are typically before Cass County or handled by the Cass County Joint Water Resources District in the respect that those other properties with the diversion deal with drainage easements. I think it's important to note, this is not a drainage easement request. This is a construction easement request for a temporary road to be located in the location of the temporary easement. When I look at North Dakota Century Code 6116.109, which is what I understand this commission is addressing, it's very clear under Subpart 2 that in relation to QuickTake procedures or eminent domain or easements, what the statute says is that the Cass County Joint Water Resource District has authority by statute to quote, acquire the necessary rights in land for the construction of dams, flood control projects and water, and other water conservation, distribution and supply works of any nature, and to permit the flooding of lands and to secure the right of access to such dams and other devices and the right of public access to any waters impounded thereby, end quote. So that's for drainage easements. That's for locations where there are dams, where there are flood control projects. And while this may be a flood control project, they're not asking to acquire rights in land for the flood control project here. They're asking for a construction easement. And construction easements are governed, and it's important to bear in mind here, this is not a county highway, this is not a county road, this is the interstate highway, which falls under North Dakota Century Code Chapter or Title 24. Title 24 is governed by the North Dakota Department of Transportation. I think, I think the commissioners would likely be aware, then, when it deals with improvements to the interstate road system that go through Cass County, that is within the exclusive jurisdiction of the North Dakota Department of Transportation. And so if they are seeking an easement for this location, a construction easement as they define, that has to be requested by the North Dakota Department of Transportation. That is not a request that the Cass County Joint Water Resources District or Cass County can make through this process. This has to come through the North Dakota Department of Transportation or at a minimum, if Cass County thought it had jurisdiction, it would have to be initiated not by the Cass County Joint Water Resources District, but by some other department such as the Roads Department or the Highway Department through Cass County. And once again, I think interstate highways are strictly the jurisdiction of the North Dakota Department of Transportation. And when I look at Chapter 24 of the North Dakota Century Code, specifically 240118, right-of-way and materials may be acquired by purchaser eminent domain, it identifies the type of projects to which Chapter 24 and that statute apply, which is the relocating, aligning, realigning, or maintaining a state highway or providing a temporary road for public use. And then it goes on to talk about how they can acquire it subject to Section 321501 of the North Dakota Century Code. I don't think there can be any reasonable dispute that what Cass County Joint Water Resources District is asking to do with the BREI Estates land is to quote, provide a temporary road for public use, unquote. They've indicated they want to put it there temporarily while they raise the existing lanes in Interstate 29. So that's clearly under Chapter 24 of the Century Code. And I would also point out that North Dakota law is very clear in saying that drainage boards are creatures of statutes and they have no powers except such as are expressly granted by the statute or reasonably implied from the powers granted. And that's the Freeman v. Trimble, North Dakota Supreme Court case. And then the NASS v. Ward County Resource District says a water resources district statutory powers are found in Title 61 of the North Dakota Century Code. So I think that makes it crystal clear here that their powers are limited by Chapter 61. They understand that Mr. Fredericks said, well, the, you know, legal issues are not something that the Cass County Board of Commissioners is addressing, but I think the Cass County Commissioners in Cass County has to first determine whether the request being made by the Cass County Joint Water Resources District is something they have authority and power to address. And as I've just gone through, they do not. Now, I could cite you to other cases, you know, from the Supreme Court, which says essentially that water resources districts cannot get outside their lane in terms of matters they're trying to address or acquire, which is limited to drainage based on the statute I read you. So I don't think that's a possibility in this case that they can have their request granted. I will tell you this, when they say... Um, I, I will tell you this, when they say, um, and, and, and let me kind of move on because even if Cass County determined or felt it did have jurisdiction in this case, which Brea Estates would dispute, that, you know, we have been trying for quite some time to get information from Mr. Olufsen's and others at the Cass County Joint Water Resource District in relation to this temporary easement. And to suggest that there's been negotiations and information given that would allow Brea Estates to analyze the temporary easement is incorrect. Um, we've written multiple letters based on concerns by the soils expert we retain indicating that the planned procedures in the temporary easement area are inadequate. Uh, and so then to say they've met the statute by requesting a meeting, I would keep writing them and say, how can we have a meeting until we know what you propose to do in the temporary easement area? And then they'd provide me a little bit more information. And then my soils, um, expert would say, no, that, that, that doesn't answer the question. I mean, we have a letter outstanding right now, um, where there's about 15, 20 areas that need to be addressed before we can even analyze what they're proposing or the price for that. And so I don't think they've met the requirements, even if Cass County had jurisdiction over this request under 6616.109. I would also point out that the farmer, um, who I, that Brea Estates leases this land to, wrote an, uh, an email to Mr. Olufsen back on April 25, 2019. I'm certainly not intending to fault Mr. Olufsen. I understand he's been extremely busy with all the activity that's, that's occurring. But the fact of the matter is, he did not respond to that email from Mr. Hurley, who has significant concerns about this temporary easement, including how it's going to, uh, affect his, his, uh, federal crop insurance. Um, where will the held water go? Where's the proposed levy? Who receives payment for the flow easement? How will the west side of the field drain? That, that email was unanswered until today. Um, and so Brea Estates has a farmer who probably isn't going to be interested in, in leasing the land, the other Brea Estates land next to this area of temporary easement, and certainly not until these questions are, are answered, including the one by the soils expert. Um, and so we can't even have the meeting with them until these questions all get answered. You know, to suggest they, they followed the statute and attempted to, or, or, or offered up to have the meeting, we never agreed to a meeting until we had the full information that was required. Um, but I think for all those reasons, there's, there's no jurisdiction. This, this is different than I think what might typically come before the Cass County Commission in relation to drainage projects, because this is not a drainage project. This is a construction easement which they concede, and that's something for the Department of Transportation to take up if that's where, you know, they, i- if they want to proceed with this. Um, I'd be happy to, uh, fill in any blanks or answer any question the commissioners might have.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Baki? If not, Mr. Fredericks, a lot of the legal is there. What say you?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of primary issues there, I guess. Number one would be Mr. Baki's contention that we've not provided information. I believe, uh, Mr. Olufsen has met with the farmers out there. I do believe we've submitted, um, a great deal of information to the extent that they still have questions outstanding. We're happy to answer those and we have directed, uh, our land agents and others to respond to all of those questions. The fact that somebody still has questions though, does not mean that we have the ability or that we should stop our process. And we, we have a deadline we have to meet and we want to, we want to ensure that we meet those deadlines. We are not, certainly not ignoring any information requests. And again, we've directed all of our agents to provide that information. And again, Mr. Olufsen has in fact met with these, with these farmers. And so, um, uh, we're trying to provide the information Mr. Baki has requested. With regard to the jurisdictional issues, I will point out that Mr. Baki did note that yes, we are constructing a flood protection project and this right of way is, uh, a, a segment of the flood protection project is necessary for the flood protection project. And, and so I am aware that Water Resource Districts are limited by statute in terms of what authorities they have. Uh, but even as Mr. Baki noted, when he quoted the statute 6116.109 subdivision two, uh, we do have this right to the extent that we need it for construction of a flood control project. And as he noted, we are constructing a flood control project. So again, these are, Mr. Baki certainly has the ability to raise these issues and I think a court is a great place or a, a great forum to determine the outcome of those arguments. We've heard this, these arguments before by other landowners. Um, and that does not mean that we don't take them seriously. And again, Mr. Baki certainly has the right to raise those in the course of the litigation. That however, does not mean that the county has to determine from a legal perspective, well, does the Cass County Joint Water Resource District have the right, uh, to construct A, B, or C? We are constructing a flood control project. We need the right of way to construct that flood control project. We have the ability to acquire right of way to construct that project and that's what we are here requesting. And to the extent that, um, Mr. Baki wants to raise those issues in the course of litigation, he will certainly have the, the ability and opportunity to do that. I can also note that my understanding is negotiations are still underway in terms of acquisition of this right of way. And so, um, I, I, I hold out hope that we'll arrive at a mutually acceptable agreement on this property. Uh, but again, the county commission is not in a position where you have to be the arbiter of a legal argument here. Uh, we do have the ability to acquire this right of way. We do have the ability to, uh, acquire right of way flood control projects and that's, that's what, exactly what we're doing and that's what we're requesting.
Thank you, Mr. Fredericks. Commissioners, any questions? Uh, Mr. Dods, Mr. Fredericks, our guest, Mr. Baki?
Uh, yes, Commissioner, just, just one thing, a couple of things I would point out in response to what Mr. Fredericks just said. He, he just said that the Cass County Joint Water Resource District has the ability to, um, ac- acquire this temporary easement. But if you look at Chapter 6116.109, th- this is not a project authorized, uh, under this chapter. That, that, that chapter does not provide any authority whatsoever over roads. In fact, there's case law in North Dakota where the North Dakota Supreme Court said a culvert could not be installed underneath a, a railroad, uh, embankment because that went beyond the, the scope of the authority, um, of the Water Resources Districts. So I, I think there is a threshold question that this commission needs to address, which is, i- is this request to construct a temporary road, which isn't allowed for under the statute that they've raised and are asking this commission to do it under, can you even address this? Do you have that authority or power? And I think the answer to that question, um, is no. Um, and, you know, so to say this is a flood control project begs the issue because the diversion certainly is a flood control project, but this request for this temporary easement is not a request for flood control. This is a request to move a road. Um, and so that's not within Cass County's jurisdiction through the request from the Cass County Joint Water Resource District. And once again, to suggest these negotiations have been ongoing and that they've responded to area farmers, the information that's been provided has been inadequate. So I don't think they've met the, the, uh, the statute a- at any rate.
Mr. Chairman, I just, in a brief.
One second, Commissioner Sherrill, you have a comment or question? And I'll jump, Mr. Fredericks, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
After Commissioner Sherrill.
Oh, I apologize, Mr. Sherrill.
Uh, no, thank you. Um, I'm just, um, and this could be after Mr. Fredericksson lays in. I just wonder if Mr. Burdick has anything that he'd like to add.
Mr. Burdick, you've been called upon.
Well, I, I, let's go ahead and listen to, to Sean's response and then I'll chime in.
Fair enough. Mr. Fredericks, please.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, thank you. Two, two things. Uh, number one, again, in terms of Water Resource District authorities, the case that Mr. Baki refers to about installation of a culvert, that was not, that was a Benson County, Burlington, Northern Santa Fe case, not at all related to this statute. That was related to 6116.1-42. So completely unrelated to what we are requesting here today. Number two, uh, I think Mr. Baki's, his argument is that for purposes of constructing a flood control project, we cannot do any ancillary activities. So I, I think, I think that's, um, an unreasonable interpretation of that statute, number one. And number two, that again, the county commission does not have an obligation to be the arbiter of these types of legal issues. Again, we are requesting the authority to utilize this statute to acquire right of way, as Mr. Baki even noted, to construct a flood protection project. That is the objective of the Cass County Joint Water Resource District. And again, to the extent Mr. Baki wants to raise these issues, he can do that in the course of litigation. The Cass County Commission does not have an obligation to analyze these types of legal issues. We have verified that we follow the process. The county commission's sole, um, charge here is to ensure that we, we verify it. You don't even have to go to this step to the, uh, uh, you don't even have to go even further to conduct your own in- individual investigation. We simply have to verify to you that we need the right of way for a flood protection project and that we follow the steps. We've certainly done that. And so I think Mr. Baki is attempting to put the county commission in a situation where you have to determine legal issues and basically hear a motion really, a legal motion. And that is not the role of the county commission and that's not why the legislature put you in this position. I know it's, it's not a, a fun situation to be in, uh, but again, this, that is not the role of the county commission under the statute.
Thank you, Mr. Fredericks. Mr. Burdick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've listened to Mr. Baki, who I've worked with before and have great respect for, and of course, Mr. Fredericks. Um, in, in reviewing the statute 6116.1-09, uh, I understand what Mr. Baki is saying. I don't know that I read it the same way he does and I don't know that I would read it as narrowly, uh, as he does. If there are specific cases on that that specify that, then all right. I've not, I'm not familiar with the cases that he, uh, that he referenced here during his, uh, comments a little bit earlier. Uh, however, it, it says essentially that, um, the, the exercise, uh, exercise of power of eminent domain, again, to go back to what he was talking about, for, for any rights, titles, interests, estates, or easements necessary or proper to carry out the duties imposed by this chapter, particularly to inquire the necessary rights, um, paraphrasing, for the construction of dams, flood control projects, and other water conservation, distribution, supply works of any nature. Um, and I, I don't, uh, I don't see that it requires it to be interpreted as narrowly as Mr. Baki has.
Thank you, Mr. Burdick. Commissioner Sherrill, and then Commissioner Steen.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Burdick. No, that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sherrill, Commissioner Steen.
Any discussion on the motion?
Um, you know, I couldn't hear him.
I'm sorry, my mic was off. I can repeat the motion, but it's the one written below the OIN in our summary. I can repeat it.
Commissioner Steen, could you?
I have moved to authorize the Cass County Joint Water Resource District to utilize quick take eminent domain under Section 61-16 dot 1-09 sub 2 of the North Dakota Century Code to take temporary easement regarding the OIN 843.
And the motion is seconded by Commissioner Brightling. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? If not, oh, call vote, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yeah.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
Pollak?
Yes.
Motion passes. Uh, thank you everyone for attending. Uh, item 4B, Mr. Dods?
Chairman, Commissioners, item 4B in your packet is OIN 1173. This is property owner Harvey Bracken. Um, Lynn Mesteth with the Dwyer Law Firm has been representing Mr. Bracken. She may be with us today, um, just for your awareness. Um, as usual, I'll summarize a few things. Uh, in your packet on page five of 42, you see the map showing the location of this parcel. As noted, it is west of the Cheyenne diversion, or actually the Horace diversion, uh, west of the city of Horace. Uh, this parcel is split by the diversion channel and as such, we need to acquire property rates, the bulk of this channel for the construction of that diversion channel. Um, negotiations, uh, summary of this is on page four. Negotiations have been ongoing for quite some time. Um, we had this appraised, our, our appraiser came back at a sort of a transitional agland value of $9,000 an acre, which has been fairly consistent up along the portion of the channel. The property owner is asking for and has, uh, been basically demanding a counter offer in the almost $20,000 an acre range. And simply put, we're quite a ways apart on value. Um, and so we have not been able to reach agreement there. As usual, I like to point out the contact log, that's on page 39. You can see that we've been having discussions for well over a year with this property owner and with their representation. Um, the counter offers have been presented to the joint board, they've been declined. The property owner has most recently retained services of an appraiser. Um, and they're working to, uh, firm up their counter offer. At the same time, our counsel, Mr. Chris McShane and Lynn have been coordinating. Um, it sounds like there's some progress being made on, um, trying to come to some type of settlement that allows construction to proceed, but agreement that value would be discussed and debated, you know, through a, through a court process. Um, and so that's, I guess, probably a good situation. Um, as you may know, through a quick take eminent domain action, the Water Resource District acquires a permanent right of way easement, which ultimately, if successful, would need to be converted into fee title. Uh, in this situation, it sounds like we're getting close to agreement that we could take the fee title acquisition now and agree to fight about value, you know, through the court process. And so that's a good situation that I think saves both sides some sort of time and heartache through the process. Um, otherwise, Pat Roberts with Bozors has been our land agent. Pat's with us virtually with the day and, uh, both Pat and I will be able to help answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Dods? Mr. Steen?
I have a question on page five here. If you could just explain, you know, I'm looking at this, looks like that, you know, this is right in the middle of the channel. We have a couple of different parcels that are part of this or, you know, the houses or residences. Is, are those considered separate parcels then?
Yes.
And there's a separate negotiation on those or those have been purchased out or I'm just curious how that, how that works.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Steen. So the, uh, little sort of teeth cut out of the parcel, those are rural residences. Uh, we have, the, those also have a separate OIN number. There are separate tax ID parcel number owned by somebody different. We have been negotiating on all of those. In fact, these parcels, I believe, have both been acquired. We have settled with those property owners. I believe both of them are in a rent back situation while their new home is being constructed and so things are going well and there we go.
Thank you. Fisher, is any further questions for Mr. Dods? Okay, I suggested, Mr. Dods said there may be an owner's representative on the line? If that's the case.
There, yeah, I know Chris McShane was con- was in contact with Lynn earlier today and he mentioned that she might not be on depending on how their conversations went, so it could...
I don't see anybody jumping to the mic. So, wait another second here. I don't see, so commissioners, uh, your thoughts, questions, discussion? Eric, Commissioner Steen?
I moved to authorize the Cass County Joint Water Resource District to utilize quick take eminent domain under Section 61-16 dot 1-
take eminent domain under section sixty-one dash sixteen dot one dash oh nine sub two of the North Dakota Century Code to take an easement for a right of way regarding OIN one one seven three.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Move in second. Any discussion, Commissioners? Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Steen?
Yes.
Shurling?
Yes.
Brightling?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Pollak?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item four C.
Chairman Commissioners, item four C in your packet is related to OINs eleven eighty-one and eleven eighty-two. These properties are owned by the Edward Samuelson Revocable Living Trust at all. As usual, I would point your attention to page five, page six of the packet, which is a map showing the location of these parcels. These parcels are immediately south of the parcel we just discussed, maybe a mile or so south. Also represented by Lynn Mesteth with the Dwyer Law Firm, and Pat Roberts has been our land agent. And so a lot of consistency among the negotiating parties there. And frankly, a lot of consistency on the reasons why we haven't settled this. Again, we had an appraised value of roughly nine thousand dollars an acre. The property owner is asking for roughly twenty thousand dollars an acre, and we just haven't been able to bridge that gap yet. Negotiating summary kind of provides some highlights of that. And then the affidavit in contact log is on page thirty-four of your packet. Again, the contact on this one started back in August of twenty nineteen, so again, well over a year of discussions and back and forths. Again, Pat and I are able to help answer any questions if you have any.
Dodds, any owner's representatives on this?
I would be the same, Lynn Mesteth, the two you mentioned.
Okay. So presuming, ask again in case owner's representatives want to talk. Now is your time to address the commission? All right. Don't see anything again. So Commissioners, Commissioner Brightling?
I move to authorize the Cass County Joint Water Resource District to utilize quick take eminent domain under section sixty-one dash sixteen point one dash oh nine subsection two of the North Dakota Century Code to take an easement for a right of way regarding OIN eleven eighty-one, eleven eighty-two.
Seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Pollak?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Shurling?
Yes.
Brightling?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item four D, Mr. Dodds.
Chairman Commissioners, items four D and four E in your packet are related to the Orton and Sandra Broadshogrevocable Living Trust. Item four D is related to parcels that they own that are impacted by the I twenty-nine grade raise project. And item four E is related to a parcel that they own related to the Southern Embankment Reach One. I will cover these separately, but recognize they're all sort of consistent consolidated discussions. So item four D in your packet, as usual, this is a sixty-page packet because of the number of parcels that are attached. Page six of sixty is a map showing the location of these parcels that are impacted. As you can see there on the map, the west side of OINs nineteen thirty-two, nineteen forty-one, nineteen forty are all impacted by the grade raise project that is part of the diversion, diversion project itself. Need to raise the road to make sure it is out of the flood plain, the project is operating. The other parcels are impacted by the ring levy surrounding the Oxbo Baki Hickson area. Negotiating summary on these is, starts on page four, carries on to page five. There's been quite a bit of back and forth on these parcels. Mr. Broadshog and his family own quite a bit of land, as you may know, in the upstream area in, in Cass County. There's a handful of these parcels impacted by the I twenty-nine project, one parcel impacted by the Southern Embankment Reach One, a number of other parcels that are in the staging area where we ultimately will need to buy a flow easement. Mr. Broadshog and Sandra are represented by Bell Bank as their trustee, and so we've had multiple conversations with the trustee, always been doing the bulk of that negotiations. I've personally been involved in a few of those. And most recently, Bell Bank did retain counsel from Rinky Noonan to help them through the negotiating process for these real estate acquisitions. As you see on page five, Rinky Noonan has retained an appraiser to work on their own appraisal for value to date. Have not submitted a counter offer. And so we stand here with our offer in front of the property owner with no counter offer back from them. You can see on page fifty-two and fifty-three, the contact log. This contact log is the same for both items. But you can see that there were some conversations back in twenty fourteen. Mr. Olafson has a relationship or has worked with Mr. Broadshog in the past, and so some of the conversations have segwayed into this project. Many of those conversations were put on hold while we had injunction and uncertainty on the project. But again, in, in the fall of twenty nineteen, those conversations resumed, and you can see the contact log there in front of you. With that, I would stand for questions. Mr. Olafson is here as well to help if there are any.
Mr. Dodds, just out of curiosity and remind you, I know we're not talking about valuation, but this is more of a curiosity than anything else. I thought we just, or someone just put a chunk of this up for public auction recently, a portion to the south?
There, there are parcels that were along the I twenty-nine
Yeah.
project that were auctioned off in November of twenty nineteen.
Yep, and we looked at maybe getting involved, which we didn't.
We did not.
What was, what did those, three or five thousand bucks, wasn't it? What did they come out at?
Roughly, probably between five and six thousand dollars.
Five and six, okay.
Yep. And there, there were two parcels that were sold on that auction that we have already reached agreement with, with the new owner, to, to get the easement that we need for this project.
Okay. Again, just out of curiosity sake, Commissioners, questions for Mr. Dodds? Commissioner Steen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, you know, look at the negotiation summaries on page four. Normally, you're listing the amount per acre and whatnot. I don't see any of that on page four, at least on the norm, where I normally would see it. Do we have information regarding? I'm just curious to get, I just, you know, we're looking at this things and
Yeah.
trying to keep an idea of what's happening out there.
Sure. So.
That's a question as well.
I might ask Ollie to help me here in a second, but recognize that what we've appraised is primarily temporary construction easement. And so in the past, you're probably familiar with seeing a dollars per acre range for something we're buying in fee title. In this situation, we're trying to buy mostly a temporary construction easement. And so the appraised values for the temporary construction easements have probably been in the two hundred dollars an acre range. Typically pay that for a period of time.
Five-year period or something?
Yeah, five-year period. We have, for all of these easements up and down I twenty-nine, we have agreed, the joint board has agreed to increase those offers to two hundred and forty dollars an acre for the temporary construction easements. So that's kind of been the ballpark numbers that we've been talking about.
But, yeah, so I'm confused a little bit. I haven't done the math, but it's gonna be a lot of acre, Jeff two fifty an acre.
In.
That's affected property, because there's property that goes, you know, footways out from I twenty-nine. I'm just curious how this works. I recognize the name, that's why I'm asking the question.
Thank you, Commissioner Steen. So also, in this acquisition and in the appraisal, the footprint necessary for the Oxbo Ring Levy on eighty-five seventeen and eighty-five eighteen, I believe was included in those appraised values. I don't recall the appraised value per acre on those acquisitions, but that's included in this.
I know it's not our place to be involved in negotiations, but I think it's always good to have information. It seems like this one, for some reason, is lacking. My mind's significant information that we normally would see on any of these asks. I'm just curious.
Anything to add, Mr. Dodds?
I don't have those numbers here in front of me, but we could certainly follow up and share that information. I realize it would be helpful.
Commissioner, any further questions or discussion? Commissioner Brightling?
Probably twenty years I had an attorney-client relationship with Orton Broadshog. So that, when I retired in January one of two thousand nine, that relation terminated. Under those circumstances.
You're not having any?
I need to disclose that.
Commissioners, any further discussion or thoughts? Commissioner Steen?
I mean, I'm just lacking information. I'm curious what the offers have been.
So.
Offer offering. I mean, so have, compare, offering, I have no idea, because I have no idea what you're.
As I'm reviewing the details of this a little bit further, I would point out a few items. The, on page five, there's a couple of open bullets. The first open bullet on page five points out the temporary construction easement of forty-three thousand dollars an acre for the road raise and twenty-four hundred dollars for the ring levy project. And there's also forty-four acres necessary to purchase the Oxbo Ring Levy at fifty-three hundred dollars per acre. And so collectively, those come up to a price of three hundred and twenty-two. So that's if we're buying the temporary construction easement along I twenty-nine and the footprint land for the ring levy, the appraised value is three hundred and twenty-two. The two-point-seven million dollar number is associated with if we were buying all of their land in fee title. So all of the five hundred or so acres to buy in fee title would equate out at that, at that appraised value of the fifty-three hundred would equate out to the two-point-seven million dollars.
That our appraised number or theirs?
That's our appraised number.
Okay.
They are getting their own appraisal. We have not seen that yet. We have not seen a counter offer from, from yet either.
Okay, because I read that it's theirs, so it's ours.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Pollak?
Ready for a motion?
I am. Commissioner Steen, you comfortable? Orso? Okay. Commissioner Pollak?
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the Cass County Joint Water Resource District to utilize last chance eminent domain under section sixty-one sixteen point one dash oh nine, paragraph two of the North Dakota Century Code to take an easement for a right of way and temporary easement regarding OINs nineteen thirty, nineteen thirty-two, nineteen forty, nineteen forty-one, eighty-five seventeen, and eighty-five eighteen.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Move in second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Brightling?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Oh.
Pollak?
Yes.
Shurling?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item four E, Mr. Dodds.
Item four E is OIN five thousand eight. This parcel is also owned by Orton Sandra Broadshogrevocable Living Trust at all. This parcel is impacted by the Southern Embankment Reach Number One. Negotiation summary and negotiations have followed the very similar track to what we just explained for I twenty-nine. The map showing impacts on this parcel is on page six of forty. You can see the eastern few acres of this parcel is impacted by the, by the SE one, Southern Embankment Reach One levy. The negotiating summary on page four and page five provides some information. You can see there that our appraised value was twenty-nine thousand dollars for five, little over five acres of land. In our conversations, in Mr. Olafson's conversations with the bank, we have brought up settlement amounts in the eight thousand dollar range. Most recently, I guess those were all in just sort of discussion, have not seen a formal written offer, counter offer yet. As noted before, the trust has recently hired Rinky Noonan, and their attorneys are working to get an appraisal for their property. They've requested counter offers. You can see in the fifty thousand dollar range, which equated down to about ninety-five hundred dollars an acre. The board basically sent the negotiators back and did not approve that counter offer. And so there has been some back and forth, but we have not reached an agreement yet. The contact log and summary of negotiations is consistent with what you saw previously. This is on page thirty-six and thirty-seven for parcel five thousand eight. Stand for any questions.
Questions for Mr. Dodds? Any discussion, motion?
Move to authorize the Cass County Joint Water Resource District to utilize quick take eminent domain under section sixty-one dash sixteen point one dash oh nine, terms to post terms of the North Dakota Century Code to take an easement for a right of way and temporary easement regarding OIN five zero zero eight.
Is there a second, please? Move in second. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Shurling?
Yes.
Brightling?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Pollak?
Yes.
Motion passes. Mr. Dodds, that looks like he completes item four. Anything further?
I, I know that, just to look forward, we do have one item that we hope to put on your December seventh agenda. And hopefully, we're winding down with the current batch of negotiations. So we're
One of.
Getting there. Appreciate your support so far.
Commissioner Steen?
Appreciate that, the fact you're winding down and looking forward. But maybe at the next meeting, it'd be nice, at least from my perspective, just to look back. You know, I don't know how many of these we've addressed, but it'd be kind of nice to have a summary of where we're at. These been settled, unsettled, you know, have they even been addressed yet? I'm just curious to know that. Maybe no.
I, I can give you a few highlights now, if I, I keep sort of running tab, because I'm curious myself. So this is our seventh visit to the county commission. Over those seven visits, we have asked you to take action on forty-eight separate acquisitions. Those forty-eight actions have totaled eighty-eight separate parcels. Of those forty-eight actions, we have reached a settlement on six of them. There's a few others that we're getting closer and closer, and so some progress being made. As I mentioned a minute ago, we do have one more scheduled for December seventh. And I think there may end up being one or two that trickle into early next year. We've had a little bit of challenge getting service to some of these property owners, and so that's what's stated some of those out. But that gives you a little flavor of where we've been.
I think one of the least important takeaways from this I have as a Commissioner, to be honest, is the fact that clearly don't have enough money, seeing all the trusts that came through here. I'm gonna tell my mom, if she hadn't passed her, I'll go tell my daddy to work harder. Trust after trust after trust. Good golly. Good for these farmers. Anything further to add, Mr. Dodds? Are we good to go?
Thank you for your time.
I have a question.
Thank you. Commissioner Brightling?
Who is Stephen Olafson?
Otherwise known as Ollie.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate your time, appreciate your work, appreciate the owner's patience, appreciate the representatives they have. And I realize that unfortunately, sometimes court is the best way to go. And frankly, if that's what the owners nor their representatives think, it's the right way to do it. We shouldn't be afraid of the courts.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Item five A on our agenda, coronavirus update. Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, got a update for you on COVID-19 coronavirus activities here in the county and, and business related to that. One is briefed in your memo. I'm going to talk about that first. When we're done, you may have some questions for me or potentially the sheriff or the state's attorney about recent executive order. Thought we might give you an opportunity to ask some questions about that. And then I think there's, may also be an opportunity, if you want to talk a little bit about a project that was a potential project that was discussed a number of months ago, jail intake project. We, we may want to address those as well. But those, I just wanted to give you those heads up, that heads up, that we certainly can discuss those. What I briefed you on in, in your memo is a discussion that you've had, in part, over the last couple of meetings, of a request that has come from our, our friends. the last couple of meetings of, uh, a request that has come from our, uh, our friends down at Horace, uh, came in, uh, a little more than a month ago, uh, for, um, a sub-allocation based on the, uh, CARES formula distribution that the state, uh, Office of Money, uh, Management and Budget and the, uh, State Association of Counties, um, uh, developed a number of months ago. And you'll, you'll recall that that, uh, allocation formula to counties and to municipalities with, uh, law enforcement, um, operations was a distribution based on, um, law enforcement personnel-related expenses. And that was initially from, uh, for the months of March through September, uh, has re- uh, recently been extended out to March through, uh, through the end of the year. Um, so the request from, uh, Horace was a, um, pass-through, uh, for that full amount of the allocation to Cass County that, that represents the, the law enforcement policing contract that the Cass County Sheriff's Office has with the city of Horace. Uh, we've had a number of conversations, uh, with the city of Horace, with, uh, representatives of the, uh, Association of Counties, of the Municipal League, and with the other three communities that we have community policing contracts with. And those, those other kind, uh, other communities are Castleton, Kindred, and Mapleton. And, uh, at, at the end of the, uh, discussion and a recommendation that we got from, uh, the Association of Counties was to take our, um, the, the percentage of our overall twenty-twenty Cass County Sheriff's Budget and the percentage of that overall budget that is directed to personnel expenses, and that is seventy-one percent. Uh, all of the twenty-twenty Cass County Sheriff's Budget, seventy-one percent goes to, to personnel. And then if, if the county chose to do so, if you as the board chose to make a sub-allocation to, uh, to the communities that we have policing contracts with, you may wish to look at that same percentage of the, uh, um, the overall contracted amount over those, uh, that ten-month period. So the, you will see a table at the bottom of this briefing memo, and what that represents is the total ten-month amount of those contracts for the four municipalities and then, um, seventy-one percent of that amount. And so the, the recommendation would be that, uh, because this is a conversation that has, uh, involved the four municipalities and the, the associations, would be to consider that, um, that amount, that, uh, two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy dollars and eighty-three cents as a, uh, sub-allocation to the four municipalities listed in your memo. Mr. Chair, I'd stand by for questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? If not, maybe some commentary from me, let me, I don't see, there goes, uh, maybe some commentary from me. I think, Mr. Wilson, I've included these conversations with our neighbor jurisdictions. One of the rationales behind this also reinforced something Mr. Wilson mentioned is a goodly portion of us had the ability to get reimbursements to schools, did the larger cities did. It's sort of these smaller cities that aren't uber-small where you're a handful of people, they had no mechanism for getting any reimbursement. Uh, so part of the messaging from the state down was if you could help them out, that would be super. And again, we're not committed to this, we don't have to do this, but this, this is the number I can sleep with. Uh, so I'll hold on for shoes, uh, so I'll just stop there. Commissioner Sherling, and then Commissioner Pollak.
Uh, thank you. So, uh, just, just a couple of things is, number one, um, if, if maybe Robert could answer this or someone could tell me, what exactly are the, uh, restrictions for these funds? What are they to be used for? And, and secondly, um, how does this, you know, how does this compensate or how, how does our jail cost figure into this? Um, we have been working diligently and I must say very successfully in so far keeping COVID out of our jails, and it has cost us enormously to do this. Um, by having to have, um, our staff working overtime on a constant basis because people are home being quarantined has really, um, created hardship and expense, expense for the county. And I see that expense, um, being something that should be supported, you know, by the whole county because the jail is the one institution that is utilized by the entire county. It's, um, it's not, it does not, uh, go directly to each community. So, um, that's a comment and, and then a question. Thank you.
Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Chair, uh, Commissioner Sherling, uh, to the first part of your question, uh, based on the allocation, uh, uh, agreement that the, uh, uh, associations reached with the, with state O M B, um, we, these are, are passed, these are passed through to, uh, counties and municipalities with policing forces, uh, and with virtually no, no additional restrictions because they were passed through for law enforcement. Now, the, the one, the one caveat on that, uh, that, uh, I have been reminded at, uh, reminded of by, uh, uh, by Terry Trainer, uh, with the, the Association of Counties is that if counties choose to sub-allocate further, they cannot, we cannot place restrictions on the funds, uh, in addition to what restrictions are placed on us. So you will recall early on in the spring when we were first discussing these, these dollars, there was, uh, potentially a different distribution formula, and they would have had to be expended by the end of the year, and there were a, a number of different, um, uh, reporting, uh, it was a process of, of applying for particular projects, getting those approved, and then you would use those dollars, um, for, for particular projects. Be- because that, that process was essentially treated for what we ultimately, the vehicle that we ultimately received the dollars through, uh, we cannot place additional restrictions on any funds that can be sub-allocated. Now, to the, to the second, um, comment or, or question, um, yeah, I, I would simply, um, agree to, agree with you that we have had significant jail expenses, um, uh, related to, uh, all efforts made to, to keep COVID out. Um, but there are, um, and I would, I would look to, to the sheriff for, to follow up on this, but we have, um, the sheriff Johnner has, um, different divisions of the, the jail division and the, and the patrol division, and, and really the, uh, the community policing contracts are, uh, within the, uh, the patrol division rather than the, uh, the, the jail division. Sheriff, I don't know if you want to expand or, or correct me on that.
Eric John, wanna jump in?
Yep. Mr. Chair, members of the commission, if I understood your question correctly, uh, Robert, is that the, um, patrol division, which is the division that works with our policing contract, um, is different than, than the, the jail division, if I understand that correctly? Um, of course, if that was your, your question or your comment, uh, individuals that are arrested and stuff down there by the patrol division would simply have to be brought to the, the Cass County Jail. Um, is that, is that kind of what you're looking for?
Commissioner Sherling?
Was that your, was that your, what you're asking me, Robert?
Sheriff, correct. That was, I was just simply pointing out the two, the two separate divisions. Yes. Thank you.
Yes. Well, they are, they are, but, I mean, we, they, they have to work together somewhat, obviously, as a, as a unit, of course.
Commissioner Sherling, anything further?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Pollak.
Great. Uh, thank you. I have, I have a couple of comments and probably a couple of questions, too. Um, I feel strongly that, that, uh, any expenditure from this should be dedicated to reimburse actual COVID expenses only. And, and the reason is, is the balance of this should be directed towards the new jail intake area. And, you know, as we discussed at our sheriff's rotational meeting, we have a, we have a very serious need in the jail, which, which will very fast become a crisis, uh, when we have an outbreak there, which we probably will have. And, and we need to get moving on this, and, and this, completing this jail intake area benefits every taxpayer and, and every municipality in, in the county, and, um, and I think that we need to preserve these funds to that end. My question is, how much remains in the, in the, uh, coronavirus fund that's uncommitted, Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Chair, uh, Commissioner Pollak, uh, I, I would, I, I have not run that number within the last couple of days, but, uh, in balance, uh, and I would certainly look for any updated figures that Mr. Montleger wanted to chime in with, but our, our estimates that are by the end of the year, we would receive, uh, approximately eight-point-five million dollars. Uh, we have made, uh, commitments you've made to date are approximately three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand for the courtroom remodel on, uh, uh, on third floor, uh, approximately a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for my, for some IT infrastructure up, upgrades. There was, uh, thirty to forty thousand dollars at the jail for negative airflow, um, and I think those were the, the main, uh, the, the main expenditures to date. You will recall, uh, again, early on in this conversation, we did get an updated, um, cost estimate for the, the jail intake expansion that was right at about six million dollars. Uh, so we're, we're talking about some big numbers here, but I, I believe, um, that, you know, based on the, the will of this board, uh, you may, uh, still have the ability to, uh, do all of the things that you, uh, have talked about wanting to do if you so, so chose to, uh, to act in that, in that direction. Uh, to, to your first point of, um, feeling that, uh, that, uh, sub-allocations should be specifically related to COVID-nineteen mitigation activities, um, I, I will tell you, I was exactly along your line of thinking when we had the initial conversations with Horace. And that was when, uh, our, our good friend, Mr. Mr. Trainer, uh, was, was very, uh, kind to remind me that we cannot place additional restrictions on the funds beyond what, uh, that, beyond how the, the form in which we receive them.
Okay. Very well. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Well, so, um, so in that case, let's just dedicate it all to the jail, to the jail expansion and get moving on this, this very critical project. It's, it's the biggest exposure that, that we and now you as commissioners have is what's going on in the jail, and we can't afford to lo- to delay any longer on moving forward on this. So, so with that, I, I move that, that we reject the request for the expenditure of CARES dollars and dedicate the remaining balance in our, in our COVID-nineteen funds that we've received to the jail expansion project.
We have a motion. Commissioners, is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion on the motion? Commissioner Steen?
I have a difficult time supporting that without seeing the details of the information we have of, of available funds. I mean, Robert, you did a pretty good job of summarizing, but I don't know what that amount is.
Well, I think I can handle that, Commissioner Steen.
Slightly less than eight million?
Yes. So what we, what we can do is accomplish everything we had on our to-do list, and we'll have about a million dollars left over as of right now. What we didn't do, if we recall, so just a reminder to the commission, is that the initial funding proposal from the state was substantively less than what we're receiving. If you recall, there was worries that we were not going to initially, we were not going to receive the initial guarantee when in fact it wound up being months more, thus our eight-million-dollar overage in terms of what we had, eight-point-five plus or minus, uh, in terms of what we have on our potential budget to receive. The jail intake unit was fast-tracked, was chaotic, was what it needed to be because we had to have this thing completed by the end of the year. We argued a little bit back and forth that you could get into January regarding COs and pay requests and things like that, for all intents and purposes, uh, that number was accelerated. We talked to our architect, they came back and said, "Well, we don't think that number was accelerated. We're gonna stick with that even though we do bid it into summer." Uh, I'm skeptical that that number is going to be what it's going to be, but regardless, I think if we did proceed with, uh, everything we wanted to do, which remember, we aren't, we actually took a courtroom away if we back up a couple of meetings. We took one of the courtroom remodels away. Uh, with the additional revenue stream, with the intake, with the HVAC modifications at the jail, with our courtroom modifications, uh, with some of the minor purchases we have, we're still gonna have a goodly portion of dollars left to do with what we see, you know, what we see fit. So, uh, as of right now, barring catastrophe of some kind, which of course we can never, promise won't happen, we should be able to do everything and then some.
So, so, Mr. Chairman, uh, Commissioner Pollak speaking. So we can approve this motion and, and move forward, and if, and if the commission sees fit at a future time, you do have the, you do have the opportunity to change the, the formula that, that this motion contemplates in the future. But let's, let's keep the dollars all dedicated towards, towards the jail expansion project, and if you need to modify it, go ahead and modify it, but let's move this forward now.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Commissioner. Further discussion? Commissioner Steen?
We have, we have a number for the, and, that we're looking at for the jail expansion project that I actually can settle on, and, and there's two things in my mind. We've got jail expansion project, or we have the intake project, or we have both. Are we referring to the same thing? Because I've heard two different comments. We need to expand the jail, we need to improve the intake area. So I'm curious as to what we're actually referring to here.
Mr. Mr. Chair.
If I might answer?
But let me. Robert, thank you.
Mr. Wilson, then Commissioner Pollak.
Mr. Chair, uh, Commissioner Steen, we are working off of a updated cost estimate that the architect gave us for the remodel of the jail intake area. That, that is what, that was the, uh, what that was, and that was, that's an estimate, that's an updated estimate from, from the architect.
Commissioner Pollak?
The intake.
Oh, sorry. Commissioner Steen?
Oh, just to clarify, it's the intake project, not the expansion.
Commissioner Pollak.
So, so the motion really is for the, for the, uh, jail intake area, but as part of that, I contemplate that they will be adding additional, additional individual cells to take care of some of the needs that the, that the sheriff and that, that the jail have that really aren't gonna be met. As we've gotten into this COVID-nineteen, we, we see that, we see that the jail, uh, intake expansion doesn't, doesn't really address all of the needs, and so I believe that we, that we will easily use up all of these funds in order to end up with the project that the sheriff needs.
Thank you, Commissioner Pollak. A- as a just a reminder to the commission, uh, what I wanted to do was proceed with CDs to get an actual number as of January, so I would still think that was a good idea, which is why I said it, but anyway. Uh, commissioners, uh, you have a motion on the table. Further discussion on the motion? If not, roll call vote, please.
You reject the motion as we have it?
Ms. Ward, please.
Uh, the motion is to reject the sub-allocation, uh, dollars to the cities and to dedicate the remaining dollars to the jail intake expansion project.
Good, sir. Okay, uh, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Pollak?
Yes.
Steen?
Oh.
Sherling?
Yes.
Brightling?
Yes.
Peterson?
No. Motion passes. Uh, Mr. Wilson, next on your agenda.
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, members of the board, I was, uh, just going to, um, offer, uh, Sheriff Johnner or State's Attorney, Mr. Burdick, uh, the, uh, the opportunity if they wanted to have any comments about the, uh, uh, the executive order, uh, over the weekend. I, I know, uh, the sheriff mentioned that briefly in his, uh, rotational meeting moving here today. Uh, not to put the two of you on the spot, just wanted to give you that, um, that opportunity, and then I'd have one other item afterwards.
I think, Mr. Burdick, if you could lead off and then jump, as we did, as you said, Mr. Wilson, Sheriff Johnner already came to the briefing on this, but it might behoove us to have him speak again, though, so. Mr. Burdick first, and Sheriff Johnner, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, you all are aware that late on Friday, the governor and the state health officer issued some orders. Uh, they address a lot of situations, and generally, they're Generally, there are a mask mandate with exceptions to be enforced through an infraction. An infraction is something that is punishable at most by a fine and not any jail time. I had conversations with the Fargo and West Fargo city attorneys, state attorneys from varying spots across North Dakota, the Association of Counties and others about how best to implement this. I think the sheriff apparently has and can address you more on how he's going to handle that, but the governor in his press release, not so much in the order, but in the press release, indicated this was something that he was hoping law enforcement would, would use as tools for public education unless or until there were egregious examples, and then perhaps to cite as infractions. As it happens in North Dakota, if you have an infraction, if you have more than three and, three or more infractions in the same twelve months for the same thing, that can get bumped up to a misdemeanor. Hopefully, we don't run into that, and hopefully, the education programs the sheriff's looking at will work fine. And of course, there are a number of exceptions under those orders for a variety of circumstances. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I'd, I'd have you know that I, I think that the city of Fargo likely tonight will adopt something that will allow them to be the prosecutors if need be through their municipal court for violations within the city of Fargo. I'm not sure that West Fargo will do that because I think they have some slightly different tools at their disposal than Fargo currently has. So I don't know that for sure, but I think both of those city commissions are addressing the issue tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Burdick. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Burdick? All right. Chair, your comments, please.
Sure, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. So much like I mentioned earlier in our rotational meeting, I have been visiting with, with both Robert and Mr. Burdick about moving forward and how we want to proceed. Of course, I wanted to make sure that we were legal in speaking with Mr. Burdick on how we were going to enforce this if we needed to. But the, myself and the sheriff's office, or our, our staff in general, anytime that we have a new county ordinance, a new state law, in this, in this example, or this instance, a governor's order, our first objective on any of those is always going to be education. And so we really want to make sure that everyone understands what, what the laws, law changes are, in this instance, again, the, what the governor's order states. I know that there's been some governor's orders put out in the past, and so, you know, some questions have come up with, that have been posed to me is, well, don't people already know what they need to do, and this order is a little bit different? So we really, we really want to make sure that people understand this order. So if someone calls in a violation of this order, we're going to respond to that like we would with any other calls for service, because as the sheriff's department is law enforcement, we certainly want to respond and make sure that we can gather all the information and investigate the calls for service. So we're, we're going to do that, and then in doing that, we would provide education to whatever that violation was. That is our main objective. If we have something that's egregious, you know, something that's pretty blatant, we've had to deal with a person several times over, then we may look to at that point to maybe, maybe take a different sort of an action, maybe an enforcement type action. But it's really, really the, the goal of the sheriff's office to provide education, but, but in doing that, making sure that we maintain public safety and that whatever the incident is that we're dealing with, that we, that we dissipate that incident and, and that no one is in jeopardy of, of, you know, a public safety issue from, from, from the virus or whatever, whatever that person or business is doing. So that, that's our, our overall objective. I do not by any means have extra staff out driving around and enforcing these things for a couple of reasons. Number one, you know, we don't have the, we don't have the staff, staff to do that, and that certainly isn't the, the objective in, in the vast area that we, that we cover as far as patrolling. And so as these calls for service come in, we will, we will address those, we'll use, we'll use common sense, we'll use discretion, and make sure that, that we can resolve the situation for everyone's safety and, and move on to the, to whatever we deal with next.
Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, and I would take questions if anyone has any questions for me.
Commissioners, any questions for our sheriff? All right. Thank you, team. Mr. Wilson, anything further?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, the last thing that I was already intending to just raise to you as a, a point of information is that based on your motion of a moment ago, I was already thinking that a building committee meeting next on the seventh was probably a good idea. We have a number of items that we want to wrap up for you and brief you on as the end of the year draws close, and I think getting the building committee up to speed on, on the project that was just authorized to move forward with the jail intake expansion would also be a, a good touch point to get that one moving as well. So that's, that's coming, and that's more an update. And that concludes my report. If there aren't any questions.
Wilson, I'd accelerate the time on that building committee meeting. We can talk after.
Happy to do it.
Any questions for Mr. Wilson, commissioners? If not, on to our minimum five C sales, sale lots. Mr. Mount Pleasure, I saw you on. There you are.
Yes. This is a request from the city of Fargo. Tomorrow, we have our tax sale, and these were two lots that we had on there at five hundred dollars, which was basically the amount of taxes against them. I doubt that they're going to sell at five hundred dollars because after looking at them, what they are is two cul-de-sacs, two lots in the middle of cul-de-sacs, and it was designed that way. The developer originally wanted that for green space, and now he apparently doesn't want them for green space, so he let them go, along with the pond. So the city is asking to lower these to a dollar each, and then they would come and buy them at the sale. A lot of times what we do is when lots don't sell, we offer them to the city to buy them for a dollar, but under the law, we can only do that if they have special assessments against them, and in this case, they don't have any special assessments against these two lots. We have to advertise these on the web and, you know, on our website and in the forum at five hundred dollars. If we're going to lower them to a dollar, then we had announced that at the beginning of the sale tomorrow, and then hopefully, the city would buy them. Otherwise, we may end up with them and we may have to mow them, I suppose. I'm not sure.
Let them with natural prairie grasses and let them grow. Commissioner Pollak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The question is, will the city buy them for, I have two questions. The question, would the city buy them for five hundred dollars each, Mike?
They said they will not.
Okay. And the next question is for Mrs. Scherling. With your experience on the planning commission, how did they ever let this slip through where, where they, they let this be built? Wait. And it's such an obvious thing that the, that the developer's going to default on it without any sort of a condominium arrangement or something. Any, any thoughts on that?
Well, it's a great question, and, and I don't have an answer for you, but I, I had the same question in my mind when I, I was trying to think back on, on this particular one. You know, what, what happens is these come before the planning commission, and, and they go through a lot of changes depending on, on who's supportive and if neighbors aren't supportive of a project. And certainly, in, in those types of neighborhoods with single-family homes, it would be very difficult to, to do any kind of a multifamily situation there, I'm sure. And, yeah, I, but that specific one, I, I don't recall, but it's interesting, yeah, it raised, raised a red flag for me, certainly.
Great. Thank you.
I can tackle that one for you. What it is, it's, and I'm not oversimplifying this. It looks better on a drawing regarding impervious surfaces, meaning we're not paving the entire cul-de-sac. It allows you to spread the lots out a little bit more, because it's not a tight circle. I don't know if you have the, the amendment in front of you or the email that Mike sent out, but it looks great on paper, but no one thinks that next step of, hey, wait, who's going to, who's going to maintain this? So the city likes it because it looks pretty, the, the developer likes it because it's green grass in front of your house, but that last step of maintaining it is forgotten, which means it's sort of a, a lark because they know, as you or Mount Pleasure said, it's going to go back to the city, and they know it, but it's just bad planning.
And as a result, everybody pays just a little bit more in taxes to cover this, this oversight.
Yes, sir, but I tell you what, it looks great on paper.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
There was a development agreement on this, that the homeowners association was going to take care of the green space within the cul-de-sac, and that the, eventually, the pond would be turned over to the city, but they're not quite following through with that. The pond will end up with the city, the city, you know, will offer it to the city for a dollar, because nobody's going to buy that. But there are two other cul-de-sacs in the subdivision that are all paved over already. So why they did that with these and not the other ones, I'm not sure.
Anything further, Mr. Mount Pleasure?
Nope.
Commissioners, what are your witnesses?
Mr. Chairman, I move to reduce the minimum of sales price on tax parcels, zero one eighty-five ten dash double oh eleven dash triple zero, and also zero one dash eighty-five ten dash zero zero six five zero dash triple zero, based on the additional information and the requests from the city in which they're located.
Is there a second, please?
Thank you.
Move in second, and any discussion?
Just one item. The parcel number on the first one should be eighty-five ten zero one zero one, or zero one one zero.
Got it.
Zero one one zero.
Ms. Ward, you got that?
Fresh noted, thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
Pollak?
Yes.
Scherling?
Yes.
Brightling?
Yes.
Motion passes. Number five C, a dentum commercial lease space for election equipment. Mr. Mount Pleasure?
Great news. I got an email late this afternoon after we've kind of updated them on all the costs of upgrading the, on the other facility to meet our electrical needs and our access needs and all of that, and they decided that they would let us stay in our current space. The price will probably go up. We've been paying seven sixty-six a square foot. It'll probably go to eight fifty, which includes the three fifty for the cam.
Wonderful. I was wondering how that was all going to work out with, um, I don't see who's calling anybody, so I'd answer it if I could. So, Mike, do we need to act? I mean, I presume we do because we renew the lease, correct?
Well, we'll get a new lease from, probably next month sometime.
Should we worry about a motion?
Not at this time.
Yep. So, so commissioners, just to recap, essentially what they're doing is making us move next door. We're going to then move our stuff, fit up the space, and away we go, but it's, my pleasure just pointed out, between the phone ringing, it's not needed anymore because the fit up of the space would cost too much. So no action needed. We'll look for the lease in the coming months. Anything further, Mr. Mount Pleasure?
That's it. Thanks.
And number six, Blue Cross Blue Shield ballot.
Please, to authorize County Commissioner Steen to act as a county agent and sign the ballot as instructed by the Cass County Commission for the Blue Cross Blue Shield Healthy Dakota Mutual Holdings Election on Board of Directors.
Is there a second, please?
Second by Pollak.
Move in second? Boy, this was easy. You guys want to talk about anything else?
Yeah, I want to ask, I want to ask Commissioner Steen a question.
Commissioner Pollak?
Um, this, this motion now declares that you're a county agent. Did you know that?
I don't know. County agent's purpose, I got it. Smuggle and agent.
We're going to get you an office in the annex.
Or a secret agent.
Special agent, county.
Is there any further discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Brightling?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
Pollak?
Yes.
Scherling?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Question if I may follow up.
Commissioner Steen?
Mike, you're still on. You must have the official ballot in your office.
I actually have it.
Oh, Heather's got it, thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Steen?
Code online.
Oh, there you go. I can do that, too. All right. Except I think I need your code or something.
I've got it here.
Oh, I've got everything I guess I need. Thank you.
Heather?
Hmm.
I'll try again. Vouchers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have reviewed the vouchers. I had one question for Mr. Mount Pleasure, which was, it was factually explained to me, and I move approval of the vouchers dated November thirteenth, twenty twenty.
Is there a second, please? Move in second, any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Scherling?
Yes.
Brightling?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
Pollak?
Yes.
Motion passes. Committee reports. Let's start with Mr. Burdick.
No report, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Pollak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Fellow commissioners, I appreciate your confidence with your appointment of me to the county commission a year ago. Thank you for the appointment and for your service to Cass County. Mr. Wilson, I appreciate your professionalism, as well as the ad of Heather, Cindy, Brielle, and Caitlin. I salute the outstanding leadership of the county department heads. And finally, I'd like to call your attention to the Penny Pincher Award. This was first given to me by, not this, but the, but the award that is actually sitting on Commissioner Steen's desk today. It was first given to me by Commissioner Vern Bennett, I think it was in twenty fourteen, and I now give this award to the incoming commission chair, Rick Steen, for no particular reason, other than you're the leader next year. It's been an honor to be associated with Cass County. Thank you. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Pollak, thank you. Commissioner Steen?
Thank you very much, Mr. Pollak, Commissioner Pollak, and Mr. Pollak as you leave this off of.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Your reports, anything?
I don't have any reports, thank you.
Ending, Mr. Mount Pleasure?
Just to let you know, we're done with the election. We're not doing any recounts. I think overall, the election went very well. You know, we introduced the concept of vote centers this time around. I think that was appreciated both by the voters and the election workers, and so it'll be interesting when we do redistricting next year, whether the people who are on the redistricting board support that, because we'll have some rural people and some city people on there. It, it just was an easier way to run the election this time because of the COVID, but I think in the future, you know, it might be easier for everybody. Might have to have a few more sites than what we have this year, but the real advantage is for voters is they don't have to worry about which place they go to, to vote. They go to any one of the polling places that are open. And the comment I heard from election workers was, gee, this is really kind of neat. We don't have to tell anybody, hey, you're in the wrong place, and it's, you know, five minutes to closing, you're not going to be able to vote. So one of the, the big things that really helps us with that is our new express votes, where they're basically voting on a blank sheet of paper, and it's printing that out. So that, the new election equipment really helped us out with that. We had a lot less sleepless nights because, gee, are we going to run out of ballots in, in this precinct or that precinct? So I think that's really kind of the future.
Thank you, Mr. Mount Pleasure. Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I have had a couple of conversations with some of you individually about looking to organize a meeting of Cass County legislators prior to the, the session. Obviously, with, in the age of virtual meetings, I think we would likely do that a little different this year than we have in the past, but I think we also have gotten pretty good at, at teams meetings. And, and so I would say if, if you have a preference of a day or a week you'd like me to focus on, I will get to work on that, and it would be a virtual format, but we would, would certainly get the invites out and get that organized if you had a, a timeframe that you were looking at. Got a couple of other things, but I'll look for your feedback on timeline.
And, Mr. Wilson, so I believe the seventh through the eleventh, they're appointing committee leadership. I think that's it. It's either then or the first, just literally the first week, but I think it's the first full week of the
I think it's the first full week of December, they appoint leadership, so I would suggest that it be the fourteenth, between the fourteenth and Christmas, arguably, I would say probably the week of the fourteenth, maybe Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, so sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, something like that, and I think the virtuals, you know, work in our favor this time. Uh, I'd like to believe you make things easier for people to attend, they attend, I would use the extension meeting, and I don't know, I, I think, Commissioner Pollock, you were on that, I think, uh, Commissioner Shurling, I don't, I saw a couple names that was on, it's the virtual call they did with the one hour, basically the briefing, anyway, uh, there was a goodly number of people that participated in that, I actually watched it after the fact again, just to get myself a little bit of a refresher on things, too, so, uh, I think this will be a, a better, we always take good attendance, but I think it'll be just as good, if not better, so that's, that's what I would suggest.
Mr. Chair, a couple of, a couple other things would also bring your attention, obviously we have the, uh, State of the County Report tomorrow afternoon, one o'clock, uh, this is something that, uh, been working together with, uh, Sheriff Peterson on, uh, it's, uh, something a little bit new, uh, trying to keep you all up to speed on, on sort of the planning of it and at least the sort of general context and, and content that we're gonna share, and I, uh, uh, I'm looking forward to this, I, oh, there's been a lot of work that's gone into it, uh, and so that was, uh, tomorrow, one o'clock, and then the final thing is, uh, one item that we will bring back to you for consideration at your next meeting is a, uh, commissioner per diem policy. Uh, obviously, you remember as part of the budgeting process, um, back in the summer, you, uh, you approved a, a per diem, um, allocation in addition to the base salary for, uh, for commissioners, and so I've, uh, shared with, uh, with you, uh, as board members, uh, some ideas, some assumptions that I was making in, uh, in drafting that policy, and asked that you individually, uh, respond to me with, uh, a feedback, uh, about that, and, and with that, that input, we will, uh, bring a, um, uh, a, a draft policy back for your, uh, your review on, uh, on the seventh, uh, at that point, you may choose to act on it, if you, uh, still have some, some comments or, or feel like it needs work, uh, we do have one additional meeting where you, uh, could refer it if you, if you thought it ever needed that, uh, required that much attention of, uh, an additional, uh, meeting to, to review before approval, it's, uh, just wanted to give you the heads up on, uh, on a couple items there.
Thank you, commissioners, anything, Mr. Wilson? If not? I have a quick question for Mr. Wilson, you sent out an email or something on that, that policy, I saw something somewhere, now I cannot find it.
I, uh, I did send it to, uh, uh, originally, I, I had sent it to you and, uh, and Sheriff Peterson, uh, for, for some feedback, I, not, not hearing anything on that round, I, I bounced it off, uh, Mr. Mont Plager, and then I sent it out to, uh, all commissioners with a request to reply individually, so.
And I cannot, I cannot find it in my email.
I will, I'll resend that.
Thank you, I know, it flashed at me and I cannot find it, resend it if you would mind.
Will do.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson, Commissioner Brightling?
I don't have a committee report, but I do wanna take this opportunity to thank Ken for his service on the commission. You've been a breath of fresh air. I wish you the best in whatever endeavor you undertake in the future. Have a good time at it, Ken.
Great, I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Commissioner Shurling?
Well, that's a hard act to follow, but, um, yes, I would, I would echo those, those thoughts, and I would just also like to add that, um, as you may recall, Commissioner Pollock, um, left his position with the Southeast Cass Water Resource District, and he gave that up in order to help us out this last year, and, uh, really appreciate, uh, your, your service, um, to that board as well as this one, and, and you will be missed, but, you know, I, you, you know all our numbers, if you have to, um, if, if you have an opinion, I'm sure you, you know where to find us.
And you know mine, if you need me.
You bet, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shurling, Commissioner Pollock? Thank you, sir, you were here when I showed up, you disappeared for a little bit, and you filled in under less, to say the least, less than ideal circumstances, and for that I'm grateful, you made an easy choice for the four of us remaining, and I hope you understand how grateful I certainly am, and I think the rest of the four commissioners would agree, that, uh, filling in under these circumstances is not, like I said, the best. You taught me a lot, my man, and I'm grateful you were here when I was here. I'm gonna miss you, whatever you do next, you're gonna do well, you don't need my encouragement at all, but, uh, thank you for your time, thank you for your service, and I think that I could speak for even prior commissioners, those like the Wagners and the Vanyos, they had a lot of respect for you, too, I heard a lot of good things when I was first elected about this Commissioner Pollock fell out, and when me and Shurling showed up, I didn't know anything more than I did before, I sat in a couple of subcommittees with you, you know, the Park District and Planning and all the things that I did for the twelve years that Scott was in office, got to know you a little bit, but I never really worked with you, I was glad and I'm honored to work with you, I'm glad you're an advocate for the things you work for the county, I'm glad you're an advocate for the diversion, you did a lot of good work for your citizens, you should be proud, your family should be proud, you represented us well, so Commissioner Pollock, thank you sincerely.
Thank you for the kind words.
Uh, my committee report is pretty much the same as it always is, all the meetings we're all going to, I'll see you there at the diversions and the plannings and the finances and the everything else is, uh, with that, correspondence.
There is none today.
Wonderful, with that, item ten.
Mr. Chairman, I move the adjourn.
It is fitting, Commissioner Pollock, is there a second, please?
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor, I, I, we stand adjourned, thank you.
And we have our planning session, so those of you that are part of that, please don't go anywhere.
Stay on virtually, I think?
Goodbye, everybody.
Bye, Ken.
Commissioner Pollock?
Thanks, thanks so much.
Commissioner Pollock, no, he's off. Sheriff, go ahead.
I was just gonna thank him for his support of law enforcement and of our office, but it looks like he left, so.
Yep.
I think that should be public.
It needs to be public, correct?
Yes.
I say stay on this.
Public.
Right? Yep, oh, I know, it has to be, absolutely, and this is just easier, otherwise we gotta log on and log off and phone call and whoopie doodle.
Anybody you need a packet, I have a couple extra.
Uh, yes, please, well, no, no, I'm sorry, no.
I gave you one.
I know, that's what I'm saying, I said yes, please for someone else, not for me.
Do you need?
Yeah.
Heather, I wasn't talking about me, I was talking about Jim. Yes, please, Jim needs one, is what I, you didn't let me finish, you cut me off. Anyway.
Tell your S.A., anyway.
Okay.
That's my state attorney, anyway.
I know it, typically, uh, Mr. Shurling, do you have, you got the email packet, yeah? I'm gonna hold this up like you can see, right?
Um, I've got it.
Nice, okay, thank you. Uh, Brightling, Commissioner Steen, okay, typically, excuse me one second, what we do right now is, uh, pick, or s- basically have a discussion regarding our chair, vice chair, as well as our portfolio assignments, uh, what you'll notice, commissioners and soon to be commissioner, uh, you'll notice through dialogue, Commissioner Steen and I had, we sort of took it upon ourselves to make sense of what we had before, and I think I would like to actually merge even tighter, but, uh, you'll notice the format we had prior is slightly different from the format you're presented with right now on your quote future portfolios sheet, and I can talk specifically about the human services, that's to me the easiest one to pick on, is where we have, we have the zone board representation, we have extension, but merging in VSO, and then by default, you swing in the cursory elements, like the Board of Health and the Cass Lake Food Commission, so Mr. Wilson has justified them off to the right, I'd slam them underneath that human services portfolio, so it becomes one and the same, uh, I like the idea of MetroCog being with planning, I mean, it's hands, it goes hand in hand, as well as the things like county planning, and obviously, I think, I mean, the building committee being under buildings and grounds, it makes sense to sort of marry these things together, so, uh, so there's that. Um, not sure the best place to start, probably just...
Number one would be that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, probably right on the top, regarding chair and vice chair, uh, what are your wishes, commissioners, I've heard, I'm just gonna cut to the chase and be bold and maybe too doxious, I've heard, uh, some inklings that they might like me to continue as chair, I would love to continue as chair, uh, but that's the wishes of the commission, Commissioner Steen? Thank you, Mr. Chair, I talked to, uh, Commissioner Peterson earlier on, and I suggested for a number of reasons, uh, primarily because it is an incessant legislative session year, and he loves to do that stuff, and then I suggested that he continue as chair this year, as well as the fact I will be pretty much gone the months of February and March, uh, and so with that, I would like to nominate or present, or however you wanna say this, that Mr. suggests that, uh, Sheriff Peterson continues chair in twenty twenty-one.
A second.
All right, sounds good, uh, don't need probable motions right now, but any objection to that, who would be vice chair? Commissioner Steen, you wanna continue that, or? Sure, and, you know, Mary, unless you've changed your mind as far as vice chair, I'd be more than happy to continue as vice chair, unless you decide that would be something you'd like to do this year.
No, I, I think, um, given the fact that we've been through, you know, this pandemic, and unfortunately, we're not done with it, I, I just think it would make great sense to just extend both of your terms another year, um, and, and there's some other thoughts behind that, too, because, you know, as we get into this, we have to be thinking about the rotation going into the chair of the diversion, and, um, that's really a key position, and, and so, you know, you know, that person is going to be the vice chair of the diversion this, this coming year, starting, you know, middle of January, will be a Cass County Commissioner, so, um, and it, I, I think, you know, it's an opportunity for someone else to, to, um, to take that and run with it, so, um, es- especially since we're going into the legislative session, that's going to be key as well, so, um, you know, that might be a position for you, Chad, to, to consider, just, um, if you're going to Bismarck and talking to folks, um, the vice chair of the diversion would be an important position right now.
I plan to interact with our friends in the legislature, I think a good portion would be virtual, so that, you know, will behoove all of us, the advocates, more than we have in the past, because we simply have to click a mouse and show up virtually at a meeting, and talking about all, all, most if not all of the testimony will be virtual, so, again, it's not, it's something I enjoy regardless, but I think that all of us will be, it would be remiss to say we all, all won't have easy access to the legislature this year, I think.
Right, and it'll be a very coordinated effort with the diversion, because, you know, they've added staff now, and it, it'll be, it'll be somewhat different, but just keep in mind that the chair will be Mayor Judd, and so, you know, the vice chair's position, um, will be important, and it will be a Cass County Commissioner.
All right, and I have every intention, Mary, if you're there, hopefully you'll second, to nominate when it comes time in January, to nominate, Commissioner Peterson has that vice chair, unless you beat me to it.
And I would second that.
All right.
No problem with that, but do we need a motion on the, no, on the?
Chair and vice chairs.
Commissioner, chair and vice chair?
Uh, no, we do all this formally our first meeting in December. Yeah, then I think it just showed, it showed up as a consent agenda item, though, but then we have to somehow make some decisions here, so. Well, it's supposed to be just that, I think.
Actually, the chair and vice chair is a separate motion before we get started, even before the oath of office, so, yep.
Okay, so any objection to myself and Rick? No, sounds like no. Portfolio assignments, obviously, uh, we have a new commissioner coming in that's not served in any stat right now, uh, so typically, we yield to seniority, I think that, mine's selected, um, do we have any wishes, I think, I heard Commissioner Shurling wanting to stay on, on the sheriff, that, is there any, is there any truth to that rumor, Commissioner Shurling?
Thank you, yes, um, a- again, just because we're in the middle of some things, um, and, and certainly this virus is, we've done a great job in the jail so far, but, um, but yeah, I think I, you know, with the jail expansion and all the different things we're talking about there, I'd just soon hang on to it for another year, I've only had it one year in the last eight, so, um, I think two years is about as long as any of us really ever hang on to a portfolio, and I, I think that's wise, um, because I think it's important that we get out and see the other, other departments and get to know those as well, but, um, I would appreciate doing, um, sheriff and jail one more ye- one more year.
Commissioners, any objection to Commissioner Shurling? Uh, Christine? And the, the reason this was structured somewhat the way it is, I'll just be very, um, open about this, was, we, when we looked at, on the, on the committee structure, when we looked at, when I looked at, uh, zone board, it is not what it used to be, and social services portfolio commissioner is not what it used to be, it's just, it's significantly different, we're gonna see more changes as this year goes on, where that zone board becomes advisory, in, in all, in all cases, so, what I suggested, and we talked to Robert, I talked to Chad about, you know, how to take care, how to realign, I think Chad made a really good point, we don't want to reinvent the wheel here, and I said, great point, I just wanna, I just wanna, uh, rotate and balance the wheels, and so, what, my intent was, was, when I looked at this, that administrative services A would typically go to the chair, and then administrative services B would go to the vice chair, they fit hand in hand, they tie together pretty closely, uh, at least, you know, in working in that, the administrative group, and so my suggestion was that, and with that, I would re- prefer to take on administrative services B for two thousand twenty-one. Commissioners, any objection?
I have no objections to that.
Commissioner to B, Mr. Capitan, any objection, you've been quiet, no, okay? And the other we have to, was, and, and I've talked to, um, this comes down to that two-year limit, uh, or two-year thing, that's like, you know, I've talked to Jim Capitan, talked to, um, I just think he'd be a great fit for planning this year, um, Dewey, you know, I know you're very comfortable there, but you've had it for two years, and I think as Mary Shurling said, we tried to limit it to two years in any one portfolio type of deal, just so we get round, better rounded, and so that, that'd be my suggestion, and Jim, I think you're open to that, if.
Yes. My only concern about that is, can we separate out the water resource boards on that category?
We can do whatever we want, this is, this is just a suggestion, that's how you keep very busy, and that was, you know, is that what you're talking about? All the water resource boards?
Water resource boards.
But, I'm not sure how that works, but, I mean, I don't know.
You can place them anywhere we want.
Correct, and so all I did, we did whatever, Mr. Wilson, I'll blame Mr. Wilson on this, just kinda logically lumped these things together, again, there's no magic to it, and if you, if you have a special, I, I'm all about special interests, because if you have a special interest in something, you're gonna spend more time on it, you're gonna engage more on it, uh, that's kinda like me and the EDC, I love the EDC, so, I, I'd like to keep that in, as part of my portfolio, because I like to engage in that board, and obviously, like I said, if you have a positivity towards something, or, 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 you know, anyway. If you like stuff, you're gonna... You're, you're kind of in love with the resource boards, I take it, I mean, you'd love, you'd...
Well, and on top of that, we're in the midst of this right away acquisition, it's gonna continue for the next year, so.
Well, I, I would have no issue, if you wanna stay on the resource boards, that if you, if you're willing to take that on with the zone board assignments, Dewey, that'd be great, but it's kind of a different, different swath. So all you would want is the water resource boards, Commissioner Brightling?
Yeah, but, what, what you're, what Rick is suggesting is we move that up to, add it to human services.
Well, I don't know, you, move it or what, you just, you could be appointed to it, appointed to, yeah, the appointment would be a little bit different than what's on here, but your suggestion.
Okay.
I'm okay with that. Uh, Mr. Wilson, then Ms. Warden?
Okay.
I, I think what I'm hearing from this conversation is just simply take human services, um, assignment as it is, and take, then water resource boards from planning and operations, move those up to human services.
Oh, move it up, not the human services, move it up to, Mr. Brightling, to Dewey, I've not necessarily allocated, no, Ms. Warden?
He can attend the water resource boards, there, the, it's not that he's assigned to, well, anyway.
Oh, yes, yeah.
He can still, he can still attend the water resource boards.
You're not a voting member on the board?
No.
No, but I, I do get calls from all those members.
Well, you could, he can still attend, even if it's not, because, having, moving water resources up underneath human services portfolio doesn't make any sense.
Well, you're not moving it, though, it's just, it's being...
Okay. What I'm saying is he can still attend, even if it's not officially underneath, is...
Understand, but there's something to be said about being appointed to it, and I think that's why they correspond, I, I have no objection to that at all, honestly. Okay with that?
So does that mean?
Takes a little bit, takes someone off your load there, you know, so, 'cause with
Yeah, so, cause with MetroCog, Lake Agassy, County Planning Commission, well, you got, you got a few things to do there.
Then planning, weed and vector.
Stays with.
Stays?
Capitan.
Yep. Everything but water resource. Then the water resource would be Dewey. And then Commissioner Brightling, you have no problem taking on the zone extension, vet, VSO, water health, food service, correct?
Both.
Okay. Uh, then we have a number of remains.
I think it's important to, to note that, that all the commissioners can, you know, be engaged in any number of different activities that go on here, and, and I, I think you've alluded to this before, Commissioner Peterson, um, that you get called because you're District One. I get all, um, about roads, regardless if I'm on, if that's my portfolio, because I'm District Five. And so if you're not happy with, with your road, they call me, and, um, you know, so I just talk to Jason. I mean, and, you know, sometimes, sometimes I'll copy the other commissioner, but sometimes it's just a matter of getting the dust control out on somebody's road going by their house, so, um, anyway, I mean, we can all, we can all kinda cross over a bit, too.
Yeah, I, I couldn't agree more. Uh, with that, we have second page, see how it's broken down, yeah, the second page, so the, the openings we have in the second page are GFM EDC. I would like that to remain the same.
I'm thinking, okay, so back up, we have MetroCog, though.
Metro.
Alternate, are you okay being an alternate at MetroCog?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so it'd be.
Unless, I mean, I'm, I'm not married, I, the only reason I'm alternate is because I had it initially, and no one's ever wanted to be alternate. So if someone wants to be alternate, it's MetroCog, first of all, Commissioner Brightling pretty much made every meeting, I don't think I got more than one call from you in two years. Uh, I see Mr. Capitan probably be able to attend most, if not all, the meetings, but, um, MetroCog is, it's, it's a fun organization, they have fun meetings, it's very informational, so if anyone else wants that, please have that, because it is a fun thing to be involved in. Does anyone else want that, as an alternate? Okay, no, it's just.
So it's Capitan and Chad that's alternate, okay.
MetroCog, Metropolitan Council's government being one of my day.
Yes.
Chair.
Yep.
And second is the GFM EDC, again, I'd like that to remain the same. Any objection? Okay, uh, Metro Flood Diversion, I'd say we just swap out Commissioner Pollak for Mr. Capitan.
Well, just, you're skipping over, but just so we're clear, Lake Agassy would be Capitan as well as then.
Correct.
I'd mind to be alternate.
Yep, sorry. And then Cas County Board of Health would go into human zone, human services, which would be Dwayne Brightling. Metro Flood, like I said, substitute in, uh, Jim for Ken. The Building Committee, I would say that, I would like to chair that again as part of Administrative A. Uh, Commissioner Brightling, I don't know if you wanna be vice, or involved on it at all, I guess not vice, but also a committee member, and you also want.
Sure.
Okay, any objection, does anyone else want involvement? If not, uh, flood sales tax, so Commissioner Shurling, are you chairing that? I think you are, correct?
Yes.
And Ken took over for me when he came on, I just soon get back on the flood sales tax, I'm fine with that.
You would like to be?
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Steen, back on. Any objection, commissioners? Okay, then the flood buyout program, I think the same team, does that make sense, Commissioner Steen, Commissioner Shurling? Uh, Commissioner Shurling?
Can't hear you.
A flood buyout program?
Sorry, sorry, would you prefer to chair either of those, Rick?
I'm, you know, you, which one is tied most closely to your land piece, that's all I'm thinking of, Mary.
Um, well, they, they really, neither one of them, I mean, you know, the, the, the flood sales tax committee takes those, that flood sales tax and determines what projects we cooperate with throughout the county, be it a ring levee around Mapleton, or, you know, any of those projects out there. So that's, you know, that's what's left over that the diversion doesn't swallow up.
I, I would be fine chairing that, if you don't, if you prefer not to.
No, that'd be great, um, and then the flood buyout program really doesn't get utilized unless we have a flood. And, and then we lose homes, and then Mike finds FEMA dollars to, um, to buy out people that wanna get out of owning their home anymore and sandbagging, but, you know, that hopefully is a thing of the past, but, um, every once in a while, every once in a while, Jason finds a, a property that, that, you know.
She's willing to take lead on both of those.
Pardon me?
I'd be willing to take the lead, to share on both of those, if you'd like a relief, and then, as long as, as long as you're vice on that.
No, that'd be, that would be great. Um, we also need to talk about, though, um, diversion committee.
I think that's.
We don't need to decide that now, but.
That's part of this, Mary.
Yep, actually it is, but we'll run down this later. Push that next page.
Yep.
Yes, we've got both floods taken care of, like Casco Lake Food, again, that goes social, so.
That's Dewey.
Brightling. Human Services Board, I think we can have a lot of dialogue regarding that, I think right now we leave it status quo, so swap out.
Can do status quo, looks like, we have to, your three-year term is up, Chad, Mary's three-year term was up. So we have to re, either reassign the three-year terms or replace those three-year terms.
And that would be done at your first meeting in December.
And then if we wanna continue to put all the commissioners on the committee, on the board, then Jim would be assigned with three-year term as well, and that's why I say status quo.
I'm, I'm suggesting we do that.
Well, we actually have to make those.
And that will be done at the first meeting in December.
And I would have, I would have two years left, and Dwayne would have two years left.
Yep.
And then our lay members have one year left.
Yep.
So we have to actually make the reassignment, Mr. Capitan, you were gonna ask a question.
Oh, yeah, I, I missed out on the Casco Lake Food Commission.
That's, that's Dewey.
That goes in human services.
Commissioner Brightling, yep.
So we just have to make sure we make those reassignments when it comes time on.
It'll be done.
At our planning meeting. The rest of us keep our two terms.
Yep.
Correct.
That's all listed in Section Four of Board Appointments, and that policy is, uh, we deal with that in the meeting in December. This will be one of the boards.
Cas County Planning, if you go to Commissioner B.
Jim.
Capitan?
Yep. Yep.
All right, now, Commissioner Shurling, to your point, diversion board. What do we wanna do?
Well, you know, that, um, the, the regular, the, the requirements are very particular, as you recall, we went through a lot of debate last year on, on who sat on what, and, um, I, I don't have, I don't have that in front of me, but just offhand, I know my committee, um, you know, I'm Chair of Land Management, and I believe Commissioner Brightling's on that.
Correct.
And that.
Have you, Mary?
Pardon me?
You have your packet in front of you, it's, it's the sheet after the committee.
It's a colorful sheet.
Oh, okay, um.
The third under yours, Commissioner Shurling, is Mayor Peterson, has he attended those meetings?
Yeah, that's, um, he has the last couple of times, actually.
Oh, good, okay.
He has, so, um, okay, I'm finding, I'm finding the sheet now, so.
If I can interrupt Commissioner Shurling, I'll just run through, for our appointments on the diversion board, we have Commissioner Shurling, Commissioner Steen, and myself.
Yeah.
We have myself, Commissioner Steen, and Mr. Mount Pleasure. Under lands, we have Commissioner Shurling, Commissioner Brightling, and then Mayor Peterson, and in our outreach, we have Commissioner Pollak and Commissioner Steen. That's our assignments as of right now.
I would be, if, if, um, we have another commissioner or two, because we have to replace one for sure, I'd be more than willing to give up my spot on outreach.
Okay.
That would leave an opening for, you know, once we're all involved, Dwayne and Jim would want to be on the outreach, or if one of the other commissioners who are already involved with diversion wants to be in the outreach.
I'm content on finance and then the diversion board.
I'm content with the land ones with Mary.
Okay.
But Jim could fit in.
And you ought to be on outreach, gets you on the diversion authority, okay?
Well, it gets, it gets him on a committee, but not on the board.
Ball, yep.
Yeah.
And that gets everyone on a board, on the committee or board.
Are you okay staying on that one, Rick?
Yes. Nope.
Get you some of a choice?
Nobody jumps at my spot, so I guess, yeah. Are we comfortable with the remaining board and committees, except I am, so. Okay. Ms. Warden, what else do we have?
Well, the next page, it refers to the human service.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, and that, that's what will be updated at your meeting in December, okay?
Yep. Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, members of the board, one thing, um, I, you are gonna be getting a, a meeting invite from Pearl probably sometime this week, I would say, because you are gonna need, need to have a special meeting of the Human Services Zone Board before the first of December, they need to have that zone plan approved, so I, I think tentatively, we're gonna go with that, uh, November thirtieth, that had been discussed. Um, the, uh, there, I, I had a chance to, uh, speak with Sarah Stolt, uh, and communicate the, uh, desire for more feedback on, uh, and direction on what the role of a zone board member is in the zone board. Uh, and so I had forwarded some information to, um, Commissioner Steen as the, uh, portfolio on that, when we get, uh, a formal meeting invite out to you, and a, a presumably a, a briefing packet that will be, that will be in there, but I, I would, and I know you've had this conversation before, I don't need to revisit it right now, but just would, would remind you that from my conversation with Sarah Stolt, there was certainly a desire that board representation, um, really looked different than, um, than county social service boards. So do with, do with that what you want.
We'll get there.
I'm, I'm just sharing the message.
And I think just for open dialogue, I think the reality is, we'll probably get, in my mind, is two commissioners on that board. Similar to like an EDC, similar to like MetroCog, we don't need five of us, and I think we'll get there, but let's, there ain't no hurry.
I'm not, I'm not.
It's a matter of waving a wand and resigning, and you can have somebody in place next week.
I have a question as to regarding the term then, because I put term expires on the human service zone board, and what I've done is I've always used your commission term.
The three-year terms, though.
They're three-year terms?
For state statute.
So it should go to December of twenty twenty-three then?
Yeah, I think.
Mr. Wilson can run you through them.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Any? Anything further? I think that gets us taken care of. Ms. Warden, am I missing anything?
Not with that, no.
Okay.
We have to talk about, um, meetings, and the meeting dates, okay, so I'm, I'm, this whole business with the portfolios, does that mean our Group A and Group B are gonna be different? The makeup?
No.
It's not?
No.
Okay.
Group A and Group B.
You know, we have our Group A rotational meetings, we have our Group B rotational meetings?
No.
Those aren't gonna be different?
Status quo, no.
Wait a minute, hold on, cause, um, my portfolio will now include the coroner, does that change anything?
No, just who you talk to.
Well, I'm talking about the, the meetings, you know, Group A and Group B, cause.
Yeah, they'll still give their reports as they always do to us.
Okay, I see what you're saying, all right.
So, but she'll, you will be the direct conduit between commission and coroner. Right, so if they have, if they have any questions, you'll be the point of contact initially, and you and Mr. Wilson can take care of all the problems for the rest of us, even hear about it. You'd be so good at it, it's like sickening.
That was my one question regarding to the portfolio changing, all right, thank you.
Well, if I can almost predict.
Easy peasy.
Based upon who has what portfolios is coming here, where the issues are gonna be, Mary.
Yep. What do you mean, people died in cash, honey? Commissioner, you just got re-elected, part of, wasn't that part of your campaign promise? Okay, anything further?
Are you okay with the dates on here?
We, yeah.
Well, I, I, I left, okay, so the, the second meeting in July, remember how we've changed that in the past?
We don't even know if we're in a meeting commit.
So then just leave it the way it is?
I, I would leave everything, because I'm not.
Because you can always, you can always change it. I won't be here, see, I won't be here then, so you'll, somebody else will have to deal with that.
So like as an example, the March meeting, we will probably be in DC, we won't be in DC in March. There's no way we're putting four thousand county commissioners from across the United States, in, 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 no way.
Okay.
Nope.
Okay.
So arbitrarily changing it now in anticipation of maybe everything being better, nah.
No.
And I think even the summer, I think we, the summer convention will be virtual, Mr. Wilson. And, and then, by the time we hit next year, we'll be back into what was. I hope I'm wrong.
I think you're probably right.
But I, you, you just can't, but, I mean, it's three thousand people. That'd be the dumbest dang thing, you wanna spread the, the virus, that's how you do it, anyway. Uh, with that, anything else, commissioners? If not?
Adjourn.
Good to go. Bye, everybody, thank you, thank you for patience again.